All the meeting to order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law general laws, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Members of the public who wish to watch and listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. WCTV, Channel 9, Comcast, Xfinity, Channel 37, Verizon, FiOS, and livestream at wctv.org. This meeting of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Members of the public who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may also do so via telephone by dialing 1-646-558-8656 and enter meeting ID 84923138691, then press pound and press pound again at the next voice prompt. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will also will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the meeting designated for public comment by following the steps previously noted, then press star nine on their telephone keypad. This will notify the meeting host that the caller wishes to speak. All callers using this feature will be placed in queue in the order they enter the prompt. In the event that despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide real-time access, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. And with that, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or other acquisition of real property at 64 Wildwood Street in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, and to discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 1703 Units 1 and 2 in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, as an open meeting on either matter may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town, and that upon conclusion of the executive session, the board will return to open session. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. De Palma. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kyra. Any discussion? Scene is done. We will call for the vote. Mr. Bendel.
Yes.
Mr. Kyra.
Yes.
Mr. De Palma.
Yes.
Ms. Omahaoni.
Yes.
And I am a yes, and it is unanimous. Mr. O'Neill, I will wait till WCTV and the recording fall off. Seven o'clock, I will call the meeting to order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Members of the public who wish to watch and listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner. WCTV, Channel 9, Comcast, Xfinity, Channel 37, Verizon, FiOS, and livestream at wctv.org. This meeting of the Wilmington Board of Selectmen is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Members of the public who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may also do so via telephone by dialing 1-646-558-8656 and enter meeting ID 84923138691, then press pound and press pound again at the next voice prompt. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the meeting designated for public comment by following the steps previously noted, then press star nine on their telephone keypad. This will notify the meeting host that the caller wishes to speak. All callers using this feature will be placed in queue in the order they enter the prompt. In the event that despite our best efforts, we are not able to provide for real-time access, we will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. All votes will be roll call in alphabetical order, and I did want to thank our IT Director, John O'Neill, who is the man behind the virtual curtain, who is hosting tonight's Zoom meeting. And I will start with roll call. Selectman Bendel.
Good evening.
Selectman Kyra.
Yep.
Selectman De Palma.
Good evening.
And Selectman Omahaoni.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All present. The board has just reconvened from executive session for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or other acquisition of real property at 64 Wildwood Street in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A6, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town, and further to discuss collective bargaining strategy with respect to the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 1703 Unit 1 and Unit 2 in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town as so determined by the chair. I would ask that we now rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the last.
United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Divisible. With liberty. And justice for all.
Thank you. I did want to take a little bit of privilege of the chair, I suppose, to recognize that on September 3rd, this community lost an individual whose integrity and character are quite rare. Massachusetts State Trooper First Class Thomas W. Devlin passed. Myself and other members of the board and town administration were able to attend a very loving and touching tribute to a very well-liked, very well-loved man. He leaves behind a wife and four children, a large extended family, many, many friends, and a large group of coworkers that hold him in very high regard. So I did want to pause for a moment of silence to in honor of State Trooper First Class Tom S. W. Devlin. Thank you. As you may have noticed, this is not Room 9 or the Town Hall Auditorium, so welcome back to my dining room. I did want to allow Mr. De Palma to provide a little bit of context as to why the town is back in my dining room.
Good evening. I went on vacation from North Carolina, so I am self-quarantined for two weeks. I want to thank Mr. Eaton in the board for allowing this to be Zoom, so I can be a participant in it. It's aggravating being quarantined because you're stuck at home, but I'm doing what I feel is the right thing to do and from what all medical personnel tell us to do. And again, thank you very much. Thank you to the board.
Thank you, Mr. De Palma, and thank you for following state guidance on this, and we look forward to meeting in person, provided everyone is healthy, at our next meeting on September 28th. So more on that later. Now, down to business, I wanted to get to item number two, transmitting of the Treasury warrants. We have numbers 8, 8A, 9, 9A, 10, 10A, 11, and 11A. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bendel. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. De Palma. Discussion. Scene is done. We will call for the vote. Selectman Bendel.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Selectman Kyra.
Yes.
Selectman De Palma.
Yes.
Selectman Omahaoni.
Yes.
And I am a yes. It is unanimous. We have two sets of minutes tonight. We'll start with July 13, 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve.
The motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bendel. Discussion. Scene is done. We will call for the vote. Mr. Bendel.
Yes.
Mr. Kyra.
Yes.
Mr. De Palma.
Yes.
Ms. Omahaoni.
Yes.
And I am a yes. The second set is from August 5th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Bendel, seconded by Mr. Kyra. Any discussion? Scene is done. We will call for the vote. Selectman Bendel.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Selectman Kyra.
Yes.
Selectman De Palma.
Yes.
Selectman Omahaoni.
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. It's unanimous on both sets. So now to our first appointment, we have our Health Director, Shelley Newhouse, and our Fire Chief, Bill Cavanaugh. So good evening, both of you. Thank you again for joining us. Why don't you start by telling us what is our current status?
Hi, everybody. We, our status is not, I'm not happy about it. We went up over the weekend. I reported on Friday that we had seven positives, and as of today, we have 14 positives and seven in quarantine. So that's quite a jump. I sort of expected a jump after Labor Day because we had a jump after Memorial Day and 4th of July. So here's our one after Labor Day. But waiting to see about our numbers tomorrow and the next day could change our community risk level on the Department of Public Health mapping system. So just stay tuned for that. I'm keeping track of that. I see lots and lots of people out with no masks at all the playgrounds. Just, I wish people would really think about wearing masks. I see lots of people, construction crews, everything, everyone just working in groups of, you know, more than six, seven with no masks on. And I think we really need to step back and start thinking again. Let's put our masks on and think about what we're doing and see if we can get our numbers to level off and go back down so that we can get these kids back in school and start getting back to normalcy. So that's where we're at.
Thank you. Ms. Newhouse. Chief Cavanaugh, how are we tonight?
Good evening from my kitchen. You know, I'd like to echo what Shelley said. Usually I let her just deal with the community stuff. She's far more in tune with than I am. But to echo off of what she says, I'm sure Chief Desmond would agree with me, is when you're not taking the time to wear the masks, and believe me, I think, you know, I don't like wearing the mask, but, you know, in public, I have to. And I follow the guidelines. I just had a COVID test the other day for procedure, and I'm negative, so they work apparently. But you're putting the public safety personnel at risk, the police, the firefighters, the EMTs, action. You know, you're putting everybody at risk over this. So please do your best to social distance, wear a mask, you know, follow the guidelines like Selectman De Palma is doing as well if you're traveling. Let's try to get this back under control to where we were with, you know, zeros. And that way it makes just a little peace of mind for everyone in the community. As far as the CARES Act goes, that's coming to a close for right now. Let's extend it. So we've been tasked with getting all the invoices in and submitted by a week from Friday. My admin, Rebecca Sanderson, and the deputy, Chris Posey, have been working hard on getting all those numbers together with the help of the department. They're doing a great job. We're going to review them this week and hopefully get, you know, another reimbursement from the state. The FEMA Act, that grant is going until December 31st. So that'll continue to roll for a couple of months now, and we'll go from there and see what happens. I kind of expect over the fall that there is going to be some extensions in place on at least the FEMA Act, potentially the CARES Act as well if we see a spike. Hopefully, we don't, but if we do, I expect to see some extensions on that.
Thank you, Chief Cavanaugh. I wanted to open it up. The board members, any questions? Mr. De Palma?
Yes, for Shelley Newhouse. Are you finding that most establishments are abiding by the mask and distancing?
Yep. I got a couple complaints about the gyms in town, and I went and visited them. You know, it's always that one person that sees that one person that's not abiding by the rules, and then they call. So it's kind of good. I just go out and visit them and make the managers think about, yep, maybe I got to stop walking around and making sure everyone's following the rules. So by having gotten too many complaints about businesses or establishments other than the gyms, more so of the kids and people at the parks and the playgrounds and everywhere, that's where a lot of the complaints are coming from.
Just so you know, just coming back from North Carolina, I did find that most establishments were abiding by masks and distancing. But as soon as you left the establishments, no one had a mask. I would say 10% at the best were wearing masks, but in establishments, they were very good. I think that's an issue that's going to be cropping up even more and more. Thank you.
And you know, there's no rhyme or reason to the cases. You know, nothing's really linked. There's no trend in age groups. They're kind of all over the place. I mean, I have two, so four of them are in two households, so two in one household, two in another household. So obviously, you know, there's a contact. So but other than that, there's no, you know, real link to anything.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I, just a quick question to Shelley or Billy, more Shelley, I would say. I drive by the Yentile recreational facility, and I've walked down around Rotary Park with my dog, and they're playing baseball now. And I've noticed a lot of the spectators, they're, you know, they're together, and there are some that are socially distanced, but don't see them wearing masks for the most part. And when I go to the Yentile Park or drive by it, there are a number of kids utilizing that basketball court. Even today, when I drove by it, it always seems to be filled. Are you suggesting that the kids that are playing the sport also wear a mask, or is that, I mean, and I guess if so, and, you know, I know you can, you can say it 100 million times, but should we put up some signage on the fences to say, you know, please wear a mask when, you know, when you can, or please wear a mask all the time? Should we put up a few signs at the Rotary Park Little League fenced area for whatever that is worth, I guess?
There's signs put up every week, I think. I think they just get torn down. Every, every week, I'm in talking to Karen in the Rec Department, who then goes back to DPW, and they put up more signs. It's a weekly, you know, the signs, they're just ripping them down. So, but yeah, I mean, groups of kids like that, they should be wearing masks. So we've had the police.
When they're playing, I don't mean to cut you off. So when they're playing, you prefer them to wear masks as masks as well, correct?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could just kind of add on to that, I, my kids' soccer season, some of them started last weekend, and they played in masks. And I have to say, I was at Yentile for a game, and the organized sport, the soccer area, everyone was masked up. It seemed like people were distancing relatively well. But the playground area, no one was really masking, and it was a shame to see because you have to walk by that area to get to the field. The field had signage. It had a bunch of signage reminding people to wear masks, to be socially, you know, at least six feet apart. Parents were kind of spreading out along the fence areas so that they weren't even sitting in the bleachers kind of together. And the park area was very crowded. None of the kids had masks on playing, and I wouldn't, I'd say maybe, maybe 40% of the parents had masks on watching them. So it's disappointing to see. You know, I get it. We're getting start crazy, and we want life to go back to normal. But when you see our numbers have gone up now, and we're trying to get back into schools, now is not the time to be challenging kind of the things that have been working all summer.
Yeah, these little kids are like super-spreaders too out there. They're asymptomatic, running around. Those, you know, it's, they, we need to exactly step back and start thinking about making sure we're wearing our masks. And it's tough because, you know, normally, the kids would be in school by now, so they're getting like extra, an extra long summer. So they're taking advantage of it, and they're out playing and everything, which is great. But they, we need to make sure they wear masks.
Ms. Newhouse, I did want to ask you for any input that you might have on two of our agenda items coming up. We do have a request for Wilmington travel basketball to use the basketball courts at Yentile Park, and we have a proposal to change the voting location to the Shriners Auditorium. So I just wanted to ask to see if you had any inputs, any public health guidance on, or recommendations on either of those two items.
The travel basketball, I've talked to, they're fine. They can, you know, as long as they follow the guidance, they've got a good plan. I don't see a problem to use the courts for tryouts. Like I said, the organized sports have been really good. They're trying so hard, and they're really, they're doing a good job. They, there's some, you know, obviously, there's always rule breakers, but they're doing the best that they can because they don't want to be the ones to have an issue. So I don't have any problem with the basketball tryouts. I mean, they're following the guidance. So do you want me to wait for the, when you talk about the election stuff?
Yeah, if you want. I mean, I'll, I don't want to tie you up. Certainly, you can feel free to stick around if you want to, but.
Yeah, I'll just hang around. It's fine.
All right. I appreciate it. Chief Cavanaugh, any parting words?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank both Ms. Newhouse and Chief Cavanaugh for their update, but I couldn't let the moment pass without congratulating Chief Cavanaugh and his department on a beautiful new apparatus. I had a chance to see the new fire engine. It's just, just wonderful to see. So congratulations.
Thank you. Sorry, I hit myself on mute there. I couldn't unmute because the Grand Wizard wouldn't allow it. Yeah, it's a great truck. The training's been done with KME, and the groups have been working on driving around. It's what we would call kind of quasi-in-service right now. They're getting used to driving it, how it handles, how it feels. We've pumped a lot of water with it. I expect to see it in route, I'm sorry, in service fully by the end of this week. So it is a great truck. I appreciate the board's help, Finance Committee's help, Jeff, obviously, his help on, you know, when Chief Man was here, getting that put through because it was a very sorely needed piece of equipment.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Ms. Newhouse.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
Our next appointment is with Liam Prigmore. I believe I'm pronouncing that correctly, and you can correct me when he gets unmuted, regarding a proposed Eagle Scout project to be located at the Wilmington Town Common. Mr. Prigmore, am I saying that correctly?
Yes, that is correct. Prigmore.
I see that your partner in crime here, Lou Samaglia, is on as well. So I want to make sure that he gets unmuted too. But why don't you tell me a little bit about what you have in mind for an Eagle Scout project?
Sure. Just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the board for allowing me to propose this project that I've been putting together for our town. So my name is Liam Prigmore. As you said, I'm from Wilmington, been here all my life. And I'm a Boy Scout in Troop 56. I've been a scout for over 10 years, and I'm coming up on Eagle Scouts. So for my project, I wanted to do something that was really meaningful to me. So I approached Mr. Samaglia and the Department of Veteran Services back in the spring. And one of the ideas that we had that really stuck with me was an idea for an honor roll memorial in Wilmington. So an honor roll memorial is a list of names of all the service members from the town of Wilmington who have made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. So you go to towns like Woburn and PBD, some neighboring towns, monuments like that.
Bottle of water in my.
That's something that I felt really passionate about. Over the summer, I worked with Skylight Studios. So I made a design for the monument. We have 32 names, starting in World War II. A couple, we have images here, two of those. So that was an initial draft. The monument's going to be a plaque that'll be placed on a boulder. And there should be another image in there of the layout, final layout. There we go. So we felt that the wording of Wilmington's fallen heroes was just as appropriate as Wilmington Honor Roll. It may be a little bit clear. We have the names listed out, and there's space at the bottom right, as we'll see for, God forbid, if we ever have to add any other names onto the monument. And then we went with a quote at the bottom that just felt meaningful to us. So, "Those who have long enjoyed such privileges as we enjoy, forgetting time that men have died to win them." FDR. So right now, I just think that this project is a really good thing for our community, bringing people together. And I think it says a lot about the country that we have people willing to make this ultimate sacrifice for it. If we have to do this, we should definitely socially be socially distant and wear masks and everything. So, and here's the proposed location on the Town Common. It'll be mirroring the other memorial that's already there directly on the other side. And we're going to put it in front of those bushes. So it's a stone. There's a boulder that I got with the help of the Town DPW. And we'll be placing that stone on top of a cement base, so it'll be secured. Mr. Mike Welsh with Quality Constructions is helping me with that. And I do have some additional pictures here that I just printed out. So I don't know if you guys can see that too well. Okay. So it's basically just a tape measure there, if you can see that part, the yellow line. And that's from the walkway to the bushes. So we have about seven feet of clearance, and there's plenty of room for us to put the monument in there without having to move any of the bushes. So that was all I had for my presentation.
Prigmore, you're a very impressive young man. I think this is a fantastic idea. I wanted to allow your, Mr. Samaglia, who I know you've been speaking with, to chime in if he wants to.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Liam summed it up beautifully. He reached out, I want to say it was the end of February, early March, and we were at our Veterans Benefit Night at the Masons, of course, pre-COVID. And he, we presented, he presented the idea. Secretary Urano happened to be there, former Secretary of Department of Veteran Services, happened to be there at the time, and we talked for quite some time. And he was very impressed with Liam as well, as I'm sure you all are right now. He's a good kid that thought of this project on his own, and he's going to see it through. And I'm extremely proud of him to be doing this as an Eagle Scout project. And I just, I can't say enough of the good things about this young man. And, you know, in this, the way the world is today, Wilmington is going to be erecting, erecting a monument. And I think it speaks volumes for this man's character, and I'm proud to be able to play a small part in this, in this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Samaglia. I wanted to open it up to members who may wish to chime in. Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Liam, good evening. And Lou, good evening. Thank you, guys, for being on. And Liam, really, really impressed, as the chair said, really impressed with you. I don't know if you remember, we spoke back in April, early May on the phone, and it was really impressed with you at the time when you were calling and seeing if this could actually make this a reality with the Board of Selectmen. And I kept thinking to myself, most kids your age are, you know, balancing their remote schoolwork and watching Netflix, and here you are trying to find a way to honor our fallen heroes. So I was really impressed with you then when we spoke, and I'm really impressed with you here tonight. So I can't thank you for taking, enough for taking on this initiative. And I want to congratulate you, and certainly want to thank Lou and his department. And I look forward to this coming to fruition. So thank you both.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. I echo my colleagues' remarks. Liam, great, great thing you're doing here for the town. We had an opportunity to speak the other night. And you mentioned the cost, and I think it's important that maybe you mention the cost to the public so that they know what you're trying to do to raise funds for this. And you may, I don't know what approach you're going to be taking, reaching out to organizations, businesses, individuals. But this does not come without a cost in your fundraising effort. So if you wouldn't mind touch, touching upon that a little bit. So the residents may all of a sudden say, hey, I'm going to give a check to Liam because he's doing such a great job. So the residents may all of a sudden say, hey, I'm going to give a check to Liam because he's doing such a great job.
Thank you. So yeah, of course, there is a cost associated with it, and I'm definitely dedicated to getting this done. So the cost that I have to, the money that I have to raise is to cover the cost of the bronze plaque from Skylight Studios. The cost of the bronze plaque is $6,700. And so far, I have a list of contacts in the town, local businesses, organizations that I've been reaching out to that know of the project. I'm planning on making it GoFundMe. But, I mean, I'd rather be going to places in person. I mean, I think there's nothing like a face-to-face meeting, talking to people. But I've been emailing businesses, just letting everybody in town know about it. And I'll definitely have to work with my mom on this one, but I think we'll be using book to get it out on the town boards and everything, and hopefully contacting WCTV in the future. I'll be exploring all my options, for sure, whatever I have to do to get it done.
That's that's great, and I'm sure that you're going to get it done. I have no doubts about that. And and I believe that Mr. Halk can address this, or maybe Lou as well. Now, Lou, thank you for what you do for the town. But is the town is helping out a bit with with this project as well, with the stone and the placement to help out Liam? Is that true?
Correct. Correct, Mr. Kyra. Quite a few years back, I believe, when we were doing the Landry Monument on Main Street at Silver Lake, there was a company that Jerry Lawrenson worked with to procure, I want to say five or six nice pieces of stone that we've used for monuments around town. And there were still a few left. And Liam and myself went out there with Jerry, and we picked one out that we thought would look nice and would be appropriate for this application. So I believe we still might have a couple of more too. But Jerry Lawrenson was very instrumental in procuring the stone.
That's great. A lot of good teamwork there. And Liam, thank you for what you're doing, Lou, as well. And and I look forward to making a contribution to this, to this plaque. Thanks.
Thank you.
So Mahoney.
Sure. So Liam, you know me as Patrick's mom, and I want to, I'm going to, as an aside, just say, you know, you guys are heading into your senior year this year. So putting aside kind of all this awesomeness of what you're doing, just know that all of us parents and community members are thinking of you guys as you enter your senior year. And we we know that you are going to be the picture of resilience and flexibility, and you're going to get through this year amazingly. And we're going to celebrate you all as as we continue to do. But I would also just say, putting on a different hat again for a minute, consider that you've already contacted Wear One Wilmington. So have your mom email me after this meeting so that we can figure out how to help with your getting the word out for donations. Very proud of you. I think this is a wonderful idea. I love the location of it. I hope that that space stays empty for the rest of the time that the plaque is on our common. But it's just, it was, it's a great idea, and it's just a great, another great example of why we we expect a lot from your generation. No pressure.
Thank you. We won't disappoint.
I know you won't.
Selectmen DePalma is having a little bit of internet difficulty, so we might wait a little minute. But again, Mr. Prigmore, very impressive stuff, as as Mr. Wendell said, you know, to to kind of utilize some of the the time that he had in the spring towards something that's, I think, very important to have, and a very nice touch to to our commons is very impressive. Thanks, Selectmen DePalma, who's joining us from his phone. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. I'm taking your position.
Okay, I'll take that to mean you agree with me on everything tonight.
Very good.
All right. Mr. Halk, do we need a motion for Mr. Prigmore's proposed monuments?
Yes, please.
Okay. Did you want to chime in yourself?
I think it's all been said. I'm just very impressed with Liam's presentation and wish him the best in terms of this effort going forward. He's very well spoken and I look forward to seeing the the end product and the unveiling.
Thank you.
And with that, I would entertain a motion that we approve Mr. Prigmore's proposed Eagle Scout project to be located at the Wilmington Town Common.
I'll make a motion.
Who has made the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Oh Mahoney. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Wendell.
Yes.
Mr. Kyra.
Yes.
Mr. DePalma.
Yes.
Ms. Oh Mahoney?
Yes.
And I will make it unanimous. Thank you very much, Mr. Prigmore.
Thanks, everybody.
What's that, Mr. Samaglia?
If I may.
You may.
Now that now that the project has been approved, I just want to let you know we will be unveiling the new monument at our Veterans Day services on November 11th at 11:00 a.m.
That is wonderful news, Mr. Samaglia. Look forward to seeing it.
No pressure, Liam.
I'll be there for sure.
All right. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Now on to our 7:30 appointment with Christine Tuma Conway, the town clerk. And we are also joined by Priscilla Ward and Mary Osgood from the Board of Registars regarding a proposal to change the voting location for the state election on Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Good evening.
Good evening. So I'm I'm communicating from my iPhone, and this is different, so I'm assuming everybody can hear me. And, okay, thank you. So I have already spoken to you about this matter back in August. I'm not going to repeat myself. I'm basically going to just lay a little introduction and then let let Patty Ward and me speak to this as members of the Board of Registars. And then we'll answer any questions you may have. I guess the first and most important point to make is this change is being amended simply out of two basic, for two basic reasons. The first is that we are trying to hold elections in a very small area, and it's where we usually do hold elections. Because of the COVID emergency and the necessity to to distance, the capacity of our traditional polling locations is at least and probably even less than half of what it normally would be. And we're coming up on what will certainly be the busiest election in in the last four years. You know, presidential elections are the busiest elections. So so this election that's that's coming in November has a presidential, and it promises to be quite quite busy. Now, how busy it will be in terms of people coming to the polls, I can't answer that question. We had a couple of weeks ago in which we processed 6,500 votes, much more than ever would have been expected for a primary. But because of early voting and because because of mail-in voting, we had a tremendous surge in 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 participation. Of the 6,500 ballots processed, 2,500 were in person, and the others were all through the mail or through in-person early voting. So we can't really predict what, we can predict a high turnout in November, but we can't predict what nature that turnout will be. And so it's it's important to to understand that the only reason that this is being recommended is because the capacity of the locations that we currently use is a total of 7,000 square feet. And we're proposing going to a location that boasts 37,000 square feet and will give us ample room to be able to, people inside the building, even if they're standing in line, to have 16 voting booths per precinct available to us as opposed to eight or nine, which is what we what we would have in the in the locations that we currently use. That's what we had on November 1st. To put people in line inside is, to me, for for a November election when the the weather is unpredictable and could be cold, but could be precipitating. That's the reason that we're making the recommendation. Whether it's accepted or not, I'll leave to your wisdom. But on that note, unless you have any questions for me, I'd like to have Patty Ward and Mary Osgood speak.
Well, the Board of Registars, when we met, decided unanimously to go along with this. And Mary and I took a ride up around the Shriners and checked parking. Looks good. The access to the hall looks very good. And being able to get people in and keep them moving so that they can vote and then leave looks very good. And again, we're trying, thinking too, with this COVID, custodial force has been working all summer to get the schools clean and pure for the kids and go in and interrupt just maybe after a few weeks that they're back and have a chance of something being brought into the schools is kind of another deciding factor. So I think it should all run smooth by moving them there and making people aware that of the change. And that can be done through papers, through postings and whatever, and hopefully have everything go off smoothly.
And I know I was working the polls at at the Wildwood, and almost unanimously, there was support for this move. People were quite excited. The people that I spoke to, the voters that were showing up, they were pretty excited. And people I've spoken to, friends and neighbors, I haven't heard very much negative about moving. So the voters seem to be in support of this. Questions?
I did want to allow Ms. Newhouse to chime in if she's able. Hi, Ms. Newhouse.
Sorry.
It's okay. Just wanted to get your thoughts on the proposal to change the voting location to the Shriners Auditorium.
I like the idea of having it in a central location for safety reasons, for tracking and making sure that we can, like, social distance people. I do think that we can accomplish all that at the regular polling places. But I like, I just think it will be easier and more practical to have it at the Shriners.
Very good.
Okay, so I did want to open it up to other board members to chime in and ask any questions. So we'll go down the line. Mr. Wendell.
Thank you, Mr. Eaton. Thank you, Ms. Conway, Mrs. Ward, and Mrs. Everyone, thank you so much for being here. I actually have a different position on this. The majority of the folks who have reached out to me are opposed to the change. And I did, although I did hear from folks on both sides of it, and I certainly understand the safety, I heard a lot of folks who were concerned about two things. Number one was the distance they were going to have to travel. If you live on the Barica Line or if you live on the Tewksbury Line, it was going to be close to a 15-minute ride for some folks. Some people thought they might be discouraged by that. Other folks told me that they would have preferred just to go down the street from their house and be, have that their location. The other concern that I heard from folks was, how are you going to let people know? With just 49 days to go before the election, I thought it was kind of a quick turnaround in terms of letting everyone know. We'd hate to have somebody be discouraged from voting when they show up at their polling location and find out that they have to drive across town. Certainly understand there was a lot of thought put into this recommendation, and I certainly respect that. But I wanted to make it known that the majority of folks who reached out to me were opposed to the change.
To Kyra.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I spoke with Paul Ruggiero today. I had a call into the superintendent Glenn Brand. I hadn't heard back from him, but Paul did give me a call, and he had mentioned that November 3rd was a professional development day so that the kids would not be in school on November 3rd. It is possible that the teachers would be in school, but that too, on a professional development day, they could relocate to another school if they're doing something. But with that said, he also explained that they haven't even begun to discuss the Professional Development Day, everything that's taking place. And certainly understood that and how everything is moving fluently. Right now, they're going remote until the middle of October, and they may switch to a hybrid type of approach. And they're not sure if November 3rd would be open in order to save time with with schooling. So right now, it's a professional development day. There should be no children in the in the schools. But again, as he said, it's it's kind of fluid. So a question I have is related to what Mr. Wendell said about informing the residents of the change if we so choose to make a change. I see that the the memo of September 10th, with all of the ideas that you have here legally, what's the timeframe for us to get this out in order for this to happen? Is there, there's 49 days left to the election. What what's the the legal amount of time that we have to to switch a polling place?
It has to be done within 20 days of the election.
Okay, it has to be done within 20 days of the election. Okay. And I noticed that you put in here that for people that have physical issues that you're going to get, you're going to have golf carts and motorized carts for them. Where are you getting these golf carts and motorized carts, and who foots the bill on that? And let's go with that first.
So I I wasn't going to start looking into any of it until you guys made your decision. But the carts that I'm talking about are the carts that you find inside a grocery store. So I was thinking that we could look into renting those. I don't know where we would get them, but certainly somebody somewhere has them, I'm sure. And so that was the thinking with using those carts inside. As for the golf carts, we had golf carts available to us on the town meeting day, and I was thinking that we would use, utilize those those carts from wherever they came from. That would be for outside, for people that are traveling that need help getting into the building if they have to park too far away. But I will point out that there's ample handicap parking right outside the back door of the Shriners. There are, if you look at the last pages of the of the memorandum of September, the report of September 4th, there are 10 handicap spots plus another four van spots that are available. And those are literally right outside the handicapped accessible door along the backside of the Shriners Auditorium. So as for who's footing the bill, I don't know whether we'd be able to use CARES funds. We do get some reimbursement from the state for what they call extended polling hours. And so there is a little bit of of money there to use. I I don't have any idea how much it would cost, but I can't imagine it would be terribly expensive to rent those little, those little motorized, we'd only need two or three of them, I think, to, you know, it's not like you're going to have a handicapped person in there constantly or somebody that can't get around in there constantly that needs to use those. So.
Well, I understand that you won't constantly use them, but you'll have to rent them for the full day from 7:00 to 9:00 or whatever it is. And it, you know, and for us to make an informed decision, it would have made sense to get this information for us. But with that said, my concern, I guess, is with the golf carts. You, you know, you're not allowed to golf on a golf course unless you take a single, single person on a cart. And here you're going to be transporting people shoulder to shoulder. And and now we're also going to have a number of people in. And now we're also going to have a number of people inside the building when, when rules and regulations are, you know, no more than 50 in a building. We're talking about increasing that amount of people within a building. Granted socially distanced and granted this, I had a conversation with Ms. Newhouse in, in this afternoon as well, and, and that the law provides for elections to, to waive that requirement of the number of people in a facility in order to vote. But that is a little concerning to me to have that many people in, in the building at one time rather than socially distanced outside the building. I mean, you know, if we didn't have this COVID issue, then we wouldn't be talking about moving it to the Shriners. We'd have people at the three polling places and they would have to endure the elements of November 3rd. So I.
Well, one of, one of our objectives in moving to the Shriners was to get people in and out as quickly as possible so they're not exposed to anything for a long period of time. If we kept the current polling places with only eight or nine booths, those people would be in line longer. They would be indoors in line longer. And if there is inclement weather with the social distancing we're trying to implement, they could be outside, which I don't think would be conducive either. But it's, it's all about the social distancing and getting them in and out as quickly as possible, which is what we were thinking.
Good point. Thank you. Mr. Hull, do you have a recommendation for the, for the board on this?
Yes, I believe that this approach makes sense. I know the concern has been expressed about the ability to communicate this information. I, I think we can do that pretty readily. I literally have the draft of town topics on my desk that I need to get to Beverly in the next couple of days here so we can get that out with the tax bills. So if the board is so inclined to, to take this approach and use the Shriners, I would certainly make a point of including it in my message to, to residents. In addition to that, as been previously noted, we would expect to send out reverse 911 messages to those who receive that. We have other departments who have mechanisms where they can communicate with their constituency, whether it's the library, recreation. So we would utilize those resources. We would also be looking at mailing out a postcard to people. So I think there are certainly ways to get the word out to residents. And I think to the points that have been raised earlier, it does make sense to look at a larger venue where you can get people in and out more quickly. And, you know, will, will standing out in inclement weather in a line waiting to get into the buildings cause people to be less inclined to participate?
Thank you. Just, just a couple more things, if I, if I may. As for public safety, have you discussed this? I know I see Chief Kavanaugh still on here. I don't know if Chief Desmond is, is on as well. Have you discussed this with both chiefs in regards to traffic control? And, and I would assume, would there be an ambulance on site down at the Shriners as well in case of any emergency issues?
I have had those discussions, and they are both in agreement that it is, that is not an issue, you know, as far as traffic control. We're going to have police officers there anyway. We have to have police officers there. We would normally have one at each of our polling locations, so we would probably have three available to us at the Shriners. I did talk to Chief Kavanaugh about possibly having a paramedic there. I don't know about an ambulance, but certainly a paramedic. And so, yes, I had those discussions back in August.
Okay. So they, Chief, you'd think you'd have a paramedic on, on site? Is that what I heard? I mean, I know we have EMTs, right?
Yeah, I'll put an EMT up there. I mean, I could always reach out to Action and see if they'd be amenable to putting one up there, but dedicating a truck to that area for 12 hours is kind of, that's a stretch. But I, I could hire, like we do for a town meeting, a detail, have a firefighter up there with a, with a medical bag and a radio. So if we do have an issue, we can always call.
Yeah, that, that would be great. Thank you for that. And finally, two things. Signage at the various locations now, I'm sure you would have a number of signs up that tell people that if it's at the Shriners, it would, they would go to the Shriners with the address of the Shriners for them. So they'd be signed, not just a little sign on the door and some real big, some real big signs. And, and how about the lines, Tina? And I mean lines for the, for those that are running for the various offices. I know that there's a foot, was it 150 feet you have to stay away? Is that going to be marked? Is, are the Shriners going to allow you to chalk that out on their property?
I, I can't imagine that they wouldn't. It's not a discussion I held. I mean, and we can put them wherever we feel like we need to put them, so they don't have to be 150 feet out. If the police feel that it's better to keep them 200 to 250 feet away from the door because of traffic coming and going, it's really a public safety issue at that point. I mean, they have to be at least 150 feet, but I have not had that discussion with Shriners, but they've been more than amenable to anything. They've let me in there several times to do my, to do all the research and the measurements and stuff that I've had to do. And I, you know, they know that we're going to need to kind of re-vamp their whole, their whole handicap parking place because their, their spots don't comply right now with what the state requires, but they know what the plan is and they've been amenable to it. It's all going to be temporary, of course, but so will the chalking for, for marking where the, where the sign holders will be able to stand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. DePalma.
Yes, just so you know, I received a text from Anthony Montanetti. He had donated a four-person golf cart for town meeting, and he'd be more than happy to donate it again for the elections. And I believe as far as candidates holding signs, I think it could be rectified very easily. I don't see an issue with that at all. I believe that as long as, when you go inside, it's coordinated so that you know where you're going, I don't see an issue with it at all. Unfortunately, in these times, we have to take different measures. And all we're looking at, or I should say, all Tina's looking at really, is protecting the people of Wilmington, and I would support this concept this time around. Thank you.
Selma Hahn.
Sure. So I kind of have more questions, I think, than opinions right now. I understand why the need is to, to do this. I definitely understand that. But I, I think my first question is, in kind of your experience on the Board of Registars and you asked Tina, I know you haven't been in town for a super long period of time, but kind of what has been the longest wait time people have had to endure to vote historically? Because every time I vote, you guys have me in and out super quick. So I, I guess I understand the concern that we expect larger numbers and we want to make sure that they can get in and out safely without having to wait in, you know, the possible elements. But I guess, have we ever had a time that people have had to wait for an extended period of time to be able to vote?
We haven't had a time where they had to stay six feet apart in line. This is the big thing. And if there were booths in the small areas, voting booths would slow things down as well. So this way, they can be inside even distanced to make it a little safer.
And my second question is, were there any other venues other than the Shriners considered?
No, I don't think so. Tina? I don't think you have any other place in, in Wilmington that has the parking and the, and 37,000 square feet of space available. Certainly at the schools, like say you were to look at the, the high school, the parking there is just not amenable to, to the, of traffic that you would be dealing with. I, I'm unaware of any other place, and I did not look at any other place because to me, that's a place that can handle the traffic. It can handle, you know, there's 175 parking spaces. There's plenty of room for everything that we need to do and to set up. So no, I didn't look at any, any other venue because I, I just couldn't. I, I did speak to people about it. Nobody seemed to have any idea as to any other spot that might be, that might be possible.
Because I would, I would just say, my one concern, you know, I, I think I echo selectmen Bendel a little bit. The only, I haven't heard much commentary about this, but there were a few people who said they are concerned by moving it to that part of town. It's kind of, it's not centrally located. Like, right now, all three of our polling locations are kind of within a mile of each other, kind of centrally located to the town. This is on the outskirts in an industrial area. And I would say, as a band parent, when I'm trying to leave a concert, you know, you basically expect to be sitting in traffic to get out of there for a while. Not that I would expect that volume on voting day. I guess maybe I'm naive in thinking that we would have, you know, 200 cars converging at the same time. But I wouldn't want to see a situation where someone is, is driving down, you know, that road to vote, sees a long line and decides to just turn around and not vote because it's not, you know, the same as, as pulling into the Beltway and, and running in and running out. So I, I'm a little bit concerned about the location, just from reading the material, Tina, that you had given me. We don't need 37,000 square feet. We, it sounded like we needed about 8,000 square feet, if I'm reading it correctly. And I.
We currently, we currently operate in 8,000 square feet amongst the three, the total of all three places is 8,000 square feet. So with that, we have half the number of voting booths that we normally have available to us, and we don't have really much area to wait in line outside of the, the voting locations. So I would like to, to say one thing that, that we haven't talked about tonight that, that I think is important, is there are alternatives to, to election day voting. We'll have two weeks of early, in-person early voting at town hall that if somebody doesn't want to, to deal with the issue of going to the Shriners, that, you know, that that is always available to them. And it's a pretty successful and pretty popular option, even if you don't want to vote through the mail. And we do have mail-in voting. I mean, we processed a total of almost 4,000 mailed ballots for the, for the primary. So, you know, we have the capacity to do it. We have the ability to do it. And I, I think more and more people are interested in voting by mail, even though it's, it's really a, a very, it's a very controversial thing these days. I think because of the mail more than anything. But once we mail that ballot out, people can return it to town hall. We have the drop slot right next to the door. And in fact, we had between Friday, between, I should say Saturday and, and Tuesday, we had 800 ballots delivered to us, mostly through that drop slot that we got out to the polls on election day. So it's, there are alternatives. So we're not saying, hey, it's this way or nothing. There are options for people who, who don't want to deal with having to go to the Shriners.
Well, and that was going to be my third question, is are we planning? I know you touched on kind of the communication component, that it would go out in town topics, and we do a reverse 911 and have signage. But in that communication, will we also be emphasizing that people have other options so that people know that they can do early voting or they can do a mail-in if they don't want to, you know, if they decide now, you know what, driving to the Shriners doesn't do it for me, for whatever reason. Maybe they don't like to drive more than a mile, or they don't like to drive near the highway, or whatever their reason might be. Are we going to be able to communicate to them their options in, in enough time that they'll be able to, to take advantage of them?
So one of the plans, one of the things that we talked about at the Board of Registars meeting was to talk, was to approach WCTV and see if we could do some kind of informational session with them, whether it be them asking questions, us having a sort of a roundtable discussion. I don't know what format yet. I mean, you know, again, you know, there's a question of how much time you can spend or should spend on something before you know you're going to have to spend the time on it. So it's not that I haven't considered all this stuff, but sometimes, you know, there's only so much time in a day and, and we're trying to keep a lot of balls in the air, even now, just with our, our mail-in applications. So, so that was, that's certainly something that we've talked about as, as, you know, another means of trying to reach out to people is, is to do the WCTV and to have the registrars involved as well as anybody else that, you know, that would help with the sort of the PSA, the Public Service Announcement sort of approach to things.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So Ms. Conway, just so I understand you correctly, whether we do the Shriners or the traditional three locations, the options for early voting or mail-in voting would be unaffected by this, correct?
Correct.
So I did have some questions about the actual physical layout of how you would be using the Shriners. I do know that we have some of the, the floor layouts as well as a picture of the inside available to us. I asked Mr. O'Neill to bring that up. So this is kind of an area with main entrance of the top and the, I guess garage door exits from the auditorium to the, the left side of it. Where would people be coming in? Where would they be leaving? Is there a queue area that you would be utilizing?
So first, let me say that the initial, my thought was, once this decision was made, we would approach the engineering department to help us to lay out similar to what they did with the town meeting. So I haven't talked to them yet because, again, it's, it's a question of, you know, utilizing the resources when we need them. So my thinking is that we would take the main entrance and we would, we would actually have part of the main entrance, the steps leading up as incoming and part of it as an out, as an outflow. So, you know, I can't really show you because obviously this is up on the screen, but if you look at where the main entrance is, that's actually a garage door that opens up and there are stairs. So my thought was, we could, we could divide those stairs in half and on the, as you're approaching the building, the stairs on the right would be, would be the entrance part of the, of the, of the stairway. And if you walk in and then walk to the right, you can go, there's a, there's a little hallway and you go around a corner and, and you come out into the, the, if you're looking at this picture, it would be the left side of the, of the room. You would enter into the room from, you would converge with the handicapped entrance, which is right also to the left of the building. There's the garage, and then there's another, there's another handicapped access door that's right, right next to that, that first garage door. So you would be converging in, both sides would be converging in that way. And then the voting precincts would be all, of course, through the, through the, the expanse of the, of the auditorium. And then folks who are not dealing with the handicapped entrance and exit would be able to, to exit through the space between the two sets of bleachers that are like sort of in the middle. You see where it says total area? Right, total area, there's a break in the bleachers. Well, that's actually an exit out back into the lobby. So my thinking is you'd flow your traffic in through, into the right and around into the, into the room from the, from the right-hand side, and then flow out through the, the space in the bleachers and then to the, back to the stairway and down the stairs. Now, if it's a decent enough day, we can keep the, the garage doors that are over to the backside of the building where the handicap parking is, we could keep those doors wide open and the access in and out there is, is flat and it's, there's, there aren't any ramps and there's, there aren't any issues with any kind of accessibility there. If we were to get those, those carts, like the grocery store carts, we would probably dock them right against the wall, right after, right next to that garage door so that as soon as somebody came in from the handicapped parking area, if they needed these carts, then we could have them, we could have them right there. The plan is, because we, they've given us the ability to not have checkout tables for the election, to take all of the bodies that we would normally have there and use those bodies to kind of steer people, guide them into lines and, and, you know, be able to get somebody from the time they walk into that, into that larger auditorium, to get them into the right line so that they don't have to wait a long time and they go in and out and, and they're done voting quickly. So that's the theory, but I can't, I don't know the exact flow, except I would like to, you know, flow in from one entrance and flow out through the, through the. you know, flow in from one entrance and flow out through the, through the, um, the break in the, in the, um, I'm sorry, in the bleachers.
Okay, and I, I believe you had mentioned this when we had first discussed this last month, but, uh, the Shriners is not gonna be charging us anything for, uh, use of their facilities, correct?
They are not.
All right, I want to, uh, allow members to ask any further questions they might have before, uh, I ask that we take up the board to consider item related to this, is any other, any board members have any questions, uh, to follow up on this?
Yeah, just, just one quick question, uh, on, you, you, this happened in the primary, where we, when we walked in, we checked in, but when we walked out, we did not check out as we have done in the past, is that a change? In policy or procedure or?
So the state, when, when the state passed the, um, the Acts of, um, the chapter one fifteen of the Acts of twenty twenty, they, they made the use of a checkout table optional for this year, for the, for the two elections this year. And, um, based on the fact that it's hard to find people to work, you've got to use shorter shifts, um, I think the theory was that it's just better to, to, to need less people. Uh, what we've done is we do keep somebody there to make sure that the ballot is run through the machine and that it goes through the machine, but the, the checkout table, I, from what I understand, was universally not used by cities and towns for the primary at all, um, in, in, in September, and we will not, again, will not be using it in November. However, we do have safeguards in place to make sure the people are depositing their ballot into the, the tabulator, we do have somebody at the tabulator watching to make sure that those, those ballots go into the machine.
Okay, so that would move people out a little bit quicker doing that, I, I gotta be honest with you, um, Tina, I was a little confused a- as to how you're getting people in and out, and I thought that you would be a little better prepared if you're making this proposal as to how that would be done, I, it, it doesn't, uh, I wish there was some sort of, uh, way to understand what you just had mentioned.
Can you see this?
No.
It's really not a matter of preparation, it's a matter of, of not wanting to jump the gun and not, I haven't talked to the, to the people in engineering and I, you know, so before I come up with some kind of a floor plan, I really thought it was best to talk to the people in engineering, but I also thought it was best to not talk to the people in engineering until I knew that we were gonna do this.
Well, well, with all due respect, I, I would think that if you're making a presentation, you would want it all laid out and prepared and ready and you'd have talked to engineering and you would have talked to the people from motorized carts to give us prices as well, so that's my own feeling.
Yes.
Any other members? All right, seeing none unless there's any objection, uh, I will take up the agenda item number six, the board to consider establishing a Shriners Auditorium, Auditorium Fordham Road as a polling location for the state election to be held Tuesday, November three, two thousand twenty. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Say a second.
I'll second it.
A motion by Mr. De Palma, seconded by Ms. Omahoney, discussion. We pretty much covered that over the last forty minutes, so, uh, unless there's anyone else that wants to make any comments, I will call for a vote by roll call, uh, Mr. Bendel.
No.
Mr. Kyra.
No.
Mr. De Palma.
Yes.
Ms. Omahoney.
Yes.
And I am a yes. So, we have an approval, uh, three to two. Uh, Ms. Osgood, Ms. Ward, Ms. Tum Conaway, thank you for your diligence in providing this as an option, uh, certainly we understand that, uh, like with so many other things, uh, decisions that are made necessary because of COVID nineteen, uh, this, we are choosing between two uh, less than perfect alternatives, so uh, we appreciate your diligence and your, uh, concern for making sure that people have an accessible, uh, and hopefully safe uh, place to vote one way or the other, and, uh, we will wish you all a good night.
Mr. Pierre?
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Omahoney.
If I just could make your request, if we could have, um, Ms. Conway come to an October meeting just to give us more of the final details now that we kind of know that the plan is to have it there, um, I would definitely think it would be helpful and give her another mechanism to kind of get the word out there as to, um, how voting there is going to look on November third, as well as to remind people of their other options if they don't want to go there on November third.
It's a great idea, thank you, Ms. Omahoney.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to our eight o'clock scheduled appointments. Uh, we are joined tonight by Gregory Sadowski, who's the president of the Wilmington Rotary Club regarding the virtual ice bucket challenge, and I see that he is flanked by former Wilmington good guy, Chris Neville, and current, and I believe the longest-tenured Wilmington good guy in Wilmington history, Mike Burns, so. Uh, no disrespect to how good Mr. Sadowski is, but gentlemen, thank you for being a part of uh, tonight's meeting, I apologize for keeping you waiting, but why don't you let folks know a little bit about the ice bucket challenge and, uh, its history, uh, its history within your club and, uh, what we're looking at for two thousand twenty.
Good evening, um, as Jonathan said, or Mr. Eaton said, uh, my name is Greg Sadowski, the twenty twenty Rotary President here in Wilmington. Uh, and I would like to thank the board for inviting us, uh, to speak on behalf of our community activities. While this year has been challenging, as with every organization in town, uh, we're still in business. Uh, we are working with our high school interact club, uh, conducting a community service project. We're planning to move our annual live auction, uh, in, in November, uh, to go online versus live, uh, to support our Wilmington High School scholarship commitments. And we're conducting, as Mr. Eaton mentioned, our sixty-annual uh, ice bucket challenge, uh, which is going to be virtually this year. To speak further on the ice bucket challenge, I would like to introduce the aforementioned Mike Burns, who has passed Rotary President, initiated our commitment to the Angel Fund, Mr. Burns.
Thank you very much, um. Seven years ago, of course, I guess, as a lot of people realize, I mean, ice bucket challenge became a national phenomenon. Six years ago, I was president of Wilmington Rotary Club, and seven years ago, nobody ever challenged me for it. So I was thinking, gee, there must be a lot of people out there like me who would want to do it, who, uh, real, hadn't had the opportunity to get involved. We put together very quickly the idea of doing it as a community event at Rotary Park. Uh, the first year, uh, very, very successful as it has been every year since. Um, all of the monies that we raise, uh, go directly to the Angel Fund in Wakefield, which is a volunteer organization, which, um, funds, uh, a hu- a hundred percent of the donations go directly towards ALS research through the laboratories of Dr. Robert Brown at UMass Medical Center in Worcester. This year, of course, uh, as we all know, we can't get together in large groups and do what we've done in the past. So we're kind of thinking about going back to the future and, uh, and going back to what it was seven years ago, we will ask individual people uh, to take the challenge themselves and, uh, and mail a small donation hopefully, and indeed turn around and challenge other friends, family, selectmen, uh, whatever, uh, to, to also take the challenge and then challenge other people. In the past five years, we've been very successful financially, uh, the Angel Fund has done well. There is research, uh, is, is, uh, is on the cusp of, of finding a cure. It's not there yet, though, that's the problem, we have to still work hard and raise money to, so that we can come up with, with a solution. ALS wa- was pretty much unknown, uh, up until seven years ago, when, when Pete Fradyes and company started the Ice Bucket Challenge. Um, unfortunately, in Wilmington, we know too many families that have been visited by this hideous disease. And it's, it, it's something that, that, that hadn't gotten a lot of publicity until, uh, seven years ago, when the national phenomenon of the Ice Bucket Challenge started. We've had members in the past five, uh, six years, we've had, uh, high school sports teams, we have local community organizations, we've had, uh, businesses, we've had families who have been touched by it. Um, I know that, that Jonathan and Jeff, I have both been actively involved with it, uh, since we started. We, uh, you know, we hope to continue this year in a different format, and perhaps next year we can get back to the same community idea that we've had for the past few years. But, uh, we, we're hoping that, uh, that we can raise some money for the Angel Fund. We're asking members of the board of Selectmen, we're challenging them, I'm challenging them, uh, Chris will challenge you again, uh. Uh, I know a number of you have done it in the past, and we certainly hope we can count on your support again this year. Like to have you, when you do it, turn around and challenge other people so that this thing can, can spread throughout the community and the adjacent areas. Donations can be mailed in any amount to the Wilmington Rotary Club, P.O. Box five zero three in Wilmington. And just under the memo section, just indicate ALS, or they can be made directly to the Angel Fund at their website, which is theangelfund.org forward slash donate. Um, we have challenged people who have done it in the past, uh, six years with us, um, or five years with us, I guess, and, uh, and, and we're hoping that they'll respond, we're hoping we can get a large response from, from the community. Uh, the monies are so terribly important. I, I, I do say, uh, with, with a little hesitation, we have a bit of a problem, which I, I'd like to mention. We have a member of the, um, Board of Selectmen who, though unnamed, um, this afternoon posted a picture, a video of herself uh, doing the Ice Bucket Challenge. And well, I think her heart was in the right place, i- it's very obvious, I mean, it was very little ice in that ice bucket. And I have it on reliable sources that the water, rather than being cold, was actually at best tepid. So, you know, I'm hoping that, uh, she who shall remain nameless, uh, might be able to, uh, you know, to, to, to maybe redeem herself with a, a much better effort. I would be happy to buy her five pounds of ice if necessary.
There was five pounds in the bucket today, Mr. Burns, there was five pounds in the bucket today.
He must have put them in yesterday afternoon and waited for it to melt and warm up, but I'm not saying who it was because that would just be.
Is anyone else concerned that the ship is sinking in the picture behind him?
Going up and down for waves, which is same as many political careers, Ms. Omahoney. I'm gonna turn it over to Chris now because I'm frankly, I, I've run out of words.
Thanks, Mike, uh, Joe Maria, thank you for your efforts, uh, over the weekend to participate in that. And everybody, I know, uh, Alice Lyden and her family participated in the ALS Walk for Hope over the weekend over in Wakefield, another great cause, all goes to the same charity. Uh, one way I think that we can all participate to, uh, maybe get some extra notoriety to the whole program is to videotape yourselves, not just issue the challenge, but post those videos, uh, WCTV's been very helpful to me, I went down there, I, I took the challenge three times with my grandchildren a couple of weeks ago. Uh, all of those videos are posted in brief segments on the WCTV On Demand page. Um, and there's a little bit of a spiel there, much like my, what Mike just provided for you, Mike did a video, sit down, as did I in the studio, so, you know, I, I want to personally challenge all of my fellow Rotarians, uh, not only here in Wilmington, but throughout the area, anybody who may see it. Uh, we have our high school interact club that has always helped out with this event, uh, I'm hoping that, uh, they will also step up, take the, uh, the, the challenge of dumping a bucket of ice over their head and, uh, you know, hopefully we'll raise several thousand dollars for this cause, and, uh, again, if you want to, you know, get your videos together, I'm sure, uh, Ryan and his staff down at WCTV can put this together in a, into a collage, and we can, uh, have some fun with it and reminisce with it over the years.
If I could just add very, um, we, we've really had a terrific time the last five years, and that a number of high school sports teams have participated. The coaches have seen the value of this, uh, both for the community and for the, for the students themselves. And it really is a lot of fun to see a football team jogging down from the high school, for instance, to Rotary Park to do the challenge. I know things are kind of up in the air about sports teams this year and so forth, but, uh, you know, if any of the coaches are, are doing anything like that, I know the cross-country coach last year was, was particularly excited. He had everybody on the team dump ice water on his head rather than on their own, so. It's, it's a terrific opportunity, it's a lot of fun, but money is desperately needed. It's P.O. Box five zero three Wilmington Rotary Club in Wilmington or theangelfund.org forward slash donate. Thank you very much for your time, and, uh, Joe, uh, Joe Marie, if I do buy that ice for you, is that tax deductible as a political donation?
No, pay the tax money.
Maybe I can make, I, I, does anybody have any ice cube trays still that I could use?
If you, if you followed on your, you know, you know how I feel about social media, but Mike decided to start a hate campaign on the comment thread of my video this afternoon saying how little ice there was, and if he noticed in that thread, there was a challenge issued and accepted. I don't know if the chair was-
I didn't see that, I, I couldn't get past when, when Jonathan Eaton said he didn't notice a lot of ice in the picture.
Well, everyone, everyone jumped on your bandwagon, Michael, that's how Facebook works. Something angry, everyone's jumping on that bandwagon, so everyone-
Where can I get nomination papers?
I had the bulk of the ice in my bucket, the ten-year-old had a minimal amount of ice, and now she feels like she's less than two, so thank you for shattering her, her delicate-
That's what I'm here for.
Alice Lyden has offered, I said to Alice to fill the buckets with as much ice as she wants, because Mr. Eaton, do you care to join in here, jump in?
I'll let you tell it and I'll correct it when you're done.
Hmm?
Jonathan is, Jonathan is a regular participant, as, as, uh-
Jonathan jumped on the hate speak as well and said that there wasn't enough ice, so I challenged him, I said I would do a redo if he did his challenge fully suited in his skinny suit, and he said he would.
Not with a green tie, though, we don't want that to get wet.
I will suit up as well, so I, I challenged the rest of the board, you don't necessarily have to ruin your suits if you don't want to. But, um, I think we could find a way to socially distant, uh, challenge, an ice bucket challenge somewhat together in a part. Um, and I told Alice Lyden she could fill my bucket to make sure, I mean, Mike, when you did it, you could barely lift your bucket, so I don't know-
I'm a little bit older than you are, young lady. You know, and I do, I do resent greatly your hate speech for pointing out something that's plainly obvious.
There was a lot of ice, there was a lot of-
Maybe in a Manhattan you had afterwards, but I-
No.
Certainly not in the, in the bucket that was visible.
I would, I would challenge, I would challenge the rest of my board and Jeff, um, to try to, to try to do this, and we'll get it on video, if, if you guys are willing to do it, I'll suit up and do it, and like I said, Mrs. Lyden, I, it, who is gonna make sure my bucket at least is, is as full as you want it to be this time around, so.
Good, that's all we want is honesty in politics.
That's what we strive for.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, gentlemen, for being a part of this and for your continued efforts. Uh, I think the train left the tracks about ten minutes ago, but if any other members of the board wanted to comment, I'll, uh, I'll let you do so, Mr. Bendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, uh, Greg, Mike and Chris, thanks so much for coming on with us and, uh, and, uh, thank you to the entire Rotary Club, uh, for everything you guys do, this is such a worthy cause, and certainly I accept your challenge, uh, I've had the good fortune of joining you guys over the last couple of years, and, uh, it's always a good time and, uh, I look forward to it, I, I do want to point out, uh, that I don't, I don't remember if it was last year or the year before, we were lined up and there was a few of us, uh, taking the challenge, I did take the challenge, and to my surprise, Mr. Kyra, who was standing next to me, dumped his ba- uh, bucket on my head, so got a little payback maybe if I can figure out a way to be six feet away and still get you, Mr. Kyra.
I would, I would be willing to dump the ice on your head again, Mr. Bendel. And, and I would be willing to go to each of the Selectmen's house to do that, uh, to them as well, if you can meet that challenge.
You're not the only one in town who would like to do that, so get in line. I look forward to it and, uh, and I hope that we can, uh, get together and do this, I think it would be a great way to draw some attention to it. And I really hope we could invite, uh, I would encourage all residents to join us and, uh, and we can do this in a safe way, and hopefully, Jeff, we can get this done before the tax bills go out, okay? Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. De Palma.
Uh, congratulations, gentlemen, you always do a phenomenal job, I accept the challenge also. Uh, just let us, let me know when and where, and I'll be there.
Well, you're still quarantining because of a travel, a lot of travel that you did, so.
It's going to be in your driveway whenever you'd like to do it.
We're going to have to enlist the fire department to hit you with a hose.
Mr. Eaton, I would, can I just interject? I would like to thank Greg, Mike and Chris as well for coming on. The Rotarians are one of the finest groups in Wilmington and I really appreciate the work that you do on behalf of the town, the scholarships that you provide the students and most importantly, this type work for ALS and other great things that you do in town. And I know firsthand how how good they are because they help out with the Sons of Ille Easter Bunny Breakfast and the Breakfast with Santa Claus every year. The the interact group is always involved with us. And we kind of thank them enough for the for the outstanding work that they do. So and once again, I'll be very happy to go from house to house to drop buckets of ice on you. Just let me know.
Oh, we can all meet at your house and dump ice on you.
All right, Miss O'Mahony, any potting shots?
I texted Mrs. Lyden. I will admit to using my phone during the meeting, which I try never to do. I do this text Mrs. Lyden to remind, to tell her to get the buckets ready. So you tell me when and where. This is Jonathan. This is like a Hamilton moment right now, buddy. Tell me when and where and I'll be there. Done, drawn.
If you're challenging me to a duel, I will, I will.
You're Aaron Burr though, buddy.
Throw away my shot, okay?
No, let's do this. Let's do this.
Yes, we will. We'll figure something out offline. This is not something that's normally in the jurisdiction of the board, but we'll try and at least allow the town a little bit of levity in seeing their elected officials dump water on their heads. So.
Ice, ice, not water.
Ice this time, cold this time, not spa water.
That is a word, Jonathan, tepid. Yeah.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. I hope you all have a very wonderful night. And we are operating about 15 minutes behind, but our final appointment is so committee reports of the inhabitant bylaw committee, the ice rink and recreational facility committee and the economic development. So I think we will go one by one, just by the individual serving on the board that serves on each of those committees in order. So Mr. De Palma, as you are the member of the board that serves on the inhabitant bylaw committee, can you provide us with an update as to the status of that committee?
Well, the last meeting we had, we were looking over all our articles that we had brought forward and seeing what went wrong with the ones that were rejected. We're also looking, going to look into our town meeting and how we can change it. So it's more efficient, work smoother. We've received a lot of complaints from residents in town that don't like it. But it is the purest form of government and right now that's what we're looking at.
I did speak to our Mr. Peterson, our town moderator a few weeks ago on on this issue and asked for his input. I understand that the inhabitant bylaw committee is at least as of a few weeks ago, waiting on the firm that had been hired to make recommendations, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So am I correct in understanding in my understanding that you folks are continuing to meet and continuing to look to ways to improve upon the structure of our town government?
Yes, we are.
All right. And Mr. Kyra, you are the member of the Board of Selectmen on the Ice Rink and Recreational Facility Committee. You let folks know the status of that.
Sure. All prior to COVID, when all things seemed to stop in March for us, we had met on several occasions at Town Hall with various department people. Jeff Howell was was at several meetings, Paul Aloni, Valerie Gingrich. And I do have to say that the the majority of those on the committee were at the meetings and we had on occasions, some public come to the meetings to to lend support and their their opinions on it. We were at the point where we narrowed down the focus of where we were looking to put a hockey rink. We through Town Manager Howell and Valerie and Paul looked at all of the open space that Wilmington had, the various parcels that were three plus acres that would accommodate a rink or recreational facility as well. We got to the point where we were ready to, we narrowed down to four locations. And we got to the point where we were going to bring in some other developers of rinks and some other concepts that are taking place in around the town of Belmont, I believe, and Wellesley. And there were a few others where they have the concept of a private public opportunity where you know, you're providing the public land, but you're getting a private entity to come in, build it and run it. And we had Karen Campbell, who was instrumental in getting that information for us. So we were beginning to entertain those individuals when all this took place. And essentially, we haven't had a Zoom meeting because of it. And hopefully, we'll get back on track. It just came to the point where we needed people, these individuals that we were looking at, developers and had to come in in person really for us to to discuss rather than over a Zoom. And we also investigated with the Restucha Rink and the possibility of expansion in that area and and what we could do to help out the youth hockey, the figure skating and the and the high school teams in getting the appropriate ice time and the appropriate pricing. And we had, I believe, Ed Harrison, the interim A D and Paul Ruggiero, part of the committee as well. So we had a real, a real good working committee and unfortunately, it came to somewhat of a grinding halt when this pandemic hit. But I'm hoping that I'll have some conversations with Mike Di Giovanni, who is the chairman of the Rink Committee, and we'll get back on track. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kyra. Mr. Bendel, the Economic Development Committee. I will let you know that you're the chair of the Economic Development Committee. Sent me an email a few minutes before our meeting tonight would start. So you can let him know that I'll get back to him at some point. So I assume you're active.
We, thank you, thank you for the time and I'd be surprised if Mike Shampoo didn't show up on this call tonight somehow. So he seems to be our top guest recently, but he's he's doing an excellent job as chair and the Economic Development Committee has been meeting through the summer via Zoom. We also took a break in the end of March and April, but we resumed in June, July, August. In fact, our next meeting is next Wednesday. But the Economic Development Committee has been, had to pivot a little bit since COVID. Our mission was to not only help residents and businesses in town. Certain COVID pandemic, we pivoted to how can we help small businesses recover? And you'll recall, members of this board will recall that Mike Shampoo visited us over the summer and made a recommendation which this board endorsed where we could come up with a policy. Mr. Howell was kind enough to come up with a policy where small businesses could utilize town property, public property to help regain some strength in their in their small business. And I think that one that comes to mind was the New England Dance Academy had their recital on the Swaying Green, which was a success. So that was something that was developed by the Economic Development Committee, brought forward by its chairman to the Board of Selectmen. And I thought that was one fine example of how we could help businesses in town recover from the pandemic. Also, the committee has been working on the development with John O'Neill of the website page on our town website. So special thanks to John and Valerie Gingrich who helped out with that. So people who have questions about the Economic Development Committee can reach out to us. And we also put out a survey this past spring to residents to see what they're interested in seeing come to town. We're digesting that data that came in. We got over 1,200 responses. Some very interesting ones. So the committee is digesting exactly how we're going to utilize that best for residents. We also had Carol and Paul on the committee, did a nice job of, you may have seen, they worked on the Rotary sign up on the Rotary Park along 62 to advertise that the Economic Development Committee is here to help businesses that need help in the recovery and how to contact us. So they came up with a nice idea to work with the town and the Rotary to make sure that that sign was visible to folks in addition to the website. So we're constantly looking for ways that we can help businesses recover right now. Pat, Jeru and Nancy Valley have been doing an awesome job developing a database of what is available in town for spaces for any business who may be looking to come to Wilmington to do business. And in fact, we were scheduled before COVID to have a brewery come and visit our committee out of Worcester and we were set to go. And of course, that fell through with the pandemic, but we look forward to inviting them back to discuss because one of the things that stood out the most from the UMass study that we had done in terms of Route 38 was which businesses may be successful. And believe it or not, one of them was a brewery. So we certainly want to see if any breweries are interested in coming to Wilmington. So that was one conversation we had pre-COVID. I also want to mention that myself, Rob Oliveri and the chair, Mike Shampoo, recently got together a little subcommittee, if you will, and we have been charged by the rest of the group to develop some PSAs. We've been working with Ryan and our friends at WCTV to see if we can put out some quick social media videos and videos on WCTV to let businesses know that we want to help them get back on their feet. If there are unique ways that we can try to help them in the way of recommendations going forward, perhaps at town meeting, then we want to do that. And so my special thanks to Rob Oliveri, who took the time to go and get trained, camera trained at WCTV, which he really enjoyed. And we will, we're in the process of doing that as well. So there's a couple of number of things going on. We do meet next Wednesday. And I do want to add, I hope people will tune in. They're somewhat interesting meetings. We usually meet around 6:00 P M. On a Tuesday or Wednesday, depending on the month. And one of my favorite things that always happens at the meeting is Valerie Gingrich, who is Director of Planning and Conservation, as you know, usually gives us a nice update on what's happening in the town in terms of businesses. What has been permitted, what's coming in, what's going out. And in fact, at our last meeting, I thought one of the headlines that I thought most people would be interested in is that she told us that Starbucks is going to be reconfiguring their drive through. And although I'm not a Starbucks coffee drinker, I recognize that can be a challenging parking lot to navigate. So I think there'll be some excitement around that news. So little tidbits like that are always being relayed through the committee. And so that's a little bit of what's going on. I look forward to next week's meeting on Wednesday at 6:00.
All right. Great information, Mr. Bendel. Thank you. And extend our thanks to your committee and also Mr. De Palma, Mr. Kyra, your committees as well for the continued diligence in helping to improve operations and life in and around town. So. Next, Mr. Howell, Communications.
Yes. So under Communications, first item on the agenda, under Communications is just a a summary of what is happening with the RFQ for the Senior Center. You'll recall town meeting authorized funds for going forward with the Senior Center effort. The first step in that process is issuing a request for qualifications for firms that would provide owner's project management services. The owner's project manager is the town's representative that works on behalf of the town with the architect, with all the contractors and subcontractors that might be brought on board to make this project move forward. So the RFQ was issued. We received 14 proposals on August 27th. Those proposals have been distributed to members of the Permanent Building Committee who include George Hooper, Diane Allen, Jack Holloway, Paul Melroney, Mike Kachuk. Also, members of this review group include Selectman Bendel, Teresa Meganelli, a representative from the Finance Committee, and Terry Marciello. The plan is to, for the members to review the proposals and then meet the week of, you know, virtually, probably virtually, meet the week of 9/21 to come up with a short list of firms to interview and then potentially the week of the 28th of September, engage in those interviews with the expectation of providing the list in order of preference to me. And then I would go through and negotiate a fixed fee with the preferred firm and engage them in contracts. So that's where that stands. Next, under Correspondence is a memo with regard to the Environmental Protection Agencies dealing with the Record of Decision, which they have issued at least a draft version of this on the Olin Project. You'll recall that we had a, they conducted a informational session back on August 27th. They provided opportunities for interested parties to raise questions and comment. The next phase of that is September 22nd is slated to be a formal comment period. And then the original plan was that all comments would be due by the end of the day on Friday, September 25th. Last week, the Wilmington Environmental Restoration Committee, or WORK as they're known, made a request to EPA for a 30 day extension and that extension has been granted. So at this point, comments regarding that draft Record of Decision will be due on October 26th. In the meantime, town officials will be getting together via a Zoom session to discuss comments prepared on behalf of the town.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Kyra.
If I could just make a brief comment on this memo, I do want to express my disappointment to State Representative Dave Robertson. I was, I was taken by surprise that the day of the virtual meeting on August 25th, when he was on the call as well and mentioned that he had hosted a private meeting with EPA and had invited State Senator Bruce Tar and State Representative Gordon. I was disappointed that he didn't have the courtesy to invite representatives from the town such as our town manager or yourself, Chairman of the Board or any other selectman. So it was a little disappointing to see that there was a private discussion with EPA. And as he put it, and as Senator Tar put it, they they had asked their questions and and received their answers so as to allow time for the residents to ask questions and get answers. Unfortunately, we didn't, we weren't privy to their questions and we weren't privy to the answers from EPA. So it was a little disappointing that that took place without him notifying Town Manager Howell or yourself. And I do appreciate the fact that you did call, Mr. Chair, you did call Mr. Robertson to express disappointment that that be done. And I believe he apologized for not informing the town that he was having such a meeting without inviting a representative from from us to be part of that. Thank you.
Just to respond, just, I did speak with Representative Robertson the morning after. He kind of had explained the parameters of the call that happens between him, the rest of our staff. our state delegation, EPA. And it was, as you had described it, it was, they had asked their questions, which were more technical in nature. And he had, that conversation had ended with an understanding that going forward, that the town would be included in those conversations, but that was certainly, it was not an intent to put the town at a disadvantage. It was more to answer their questions, which was in line with the Q and A that we had back on August 25th. So going forward, certainly, I think that we would be invited certainly to any future discussions with EPA. So I was satisfied with his, with how that conversation had ended.
Has, just a quick question, has, has he provided or has Senator Tar, Representative Gordon provided any written information on their questions and answers to, to Town Manager Hall? Because I know we're going through now, we'll be going through a process of, of comments at this time. And I just was wondering, Mr. Hall, did you receive anything from, from our legislative delegation as to their questions and answers from EPA? Could be an important part of what you're going through in the next process.
I have not seen anything, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Next, under Correspondence.
Got a question.
Sure, Mr. DePalma.
They hand up twice already.
Sorry, I didn't see you, Mr. DePalma. Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Kyra, I take offense of you attacking our delegation, State House delegation at the hearing. That was the time not to attack. When have we ever had our complete delegation in tune with the town on an issue? And for you, the first comment you made was going on the attack against Representative Robinson. I think it was embarrassing to the town right away, instead of making it a private conversation that you said you would have with them, that could be viewed later on, or you could discuss later on, but to, in the middle of a meeting, to, to go out and, you know, attack our delegation, I think it's, it's absolutely uncalled for. And I was really surprised when you made those comments. I think you're more competent than that, and I, but I thought it was a time to ask specific questions instead of going after someone, which made it look political. Thank you.
Well, let me respond. I'm sorry if you feel that way, Selectman DePalma. I just expressed my disappointment in the legislative delegation and the fact that we were not even given the courtesy of an invitation. I believe that the Wilmington residents deserve to know what their questions were and what the answers were. That's all it was to it, sir. It was a disappointment in our state representative, and it has nothing to do with being political. This is an issue that has been going on for many, many years, if you're not aware of, and we would like to know.
I'm aware of it.
What is going on and what the questions were and what the answers were.
That, and I appreciate that very much, Mr. Kyra. But the thing was, is to come out like that in a hearing that we are supposed to be expressing our questions, I thought was, I just thought it was uncalled for.
And we, we don't have a right to know what their questions were and what they.
I didn't do that, Kyra, at all. You know, I, that's something that you could have addressed prior to or after.
Well, why would I address prior to when I didn't know he set up a private meeting with, without us knowing?
How'd you know he had it then?
At the time, I thought it was appropriate to express my disappointment that he did not invite, have the courtesy of inviting a representative from the town.
Invite them to our executive sessions?
Mr. DePalma, I'm sorry that you feel that way.
Let's try and bring this in a little bit. So certainly, I want to remind folks at home that we, I think it's important to any discussion relative to the technical aspects of the proposed plan. The town does have a consultant that we have engaged and have engaged for quite some time in this project. So, and they are hard at work and have been hard at work for, for many years, but particularly since August 5th. So, so I just want to make clear because the discussion on this is centered on the state delegation's involvement in this. And I don't want the discussion to leave anyone with the impression that the town is entirely in the dark or without counsel on this particular issue. Certainly, you know, there can be differences of opinion or feelings as to whether or not a conversation took place that did not include us back on August 25th. I think it's important to know that we are in the middle of a 30-day, now extended to 60-day comment period, where it is certainly crunch time for special town council and also our consultants to be poring through the technical aspects of a highly technical and highly detailed problem that we have had for an enormous amount of time. It is not, it, the Olin property has been inactive in terms of manufacturing since the mid-'80s. And the EPA has finally come up with a proposed remediation action. So certainly, this is an issue that is on the forefront of our minds, each of us and each member of the Board of Selectmen, since it came to light that the pollution there was of the magnitude that would require both state and federal intervention. Right? I do want to make note that certainly we're at a pretty critical point right here. So all of us are very sensitive to the issues that this has created. And there are several people in town that are very invested in the result of cleaning up that property. So certainly, I can recognize and appreciate that emotions run high when any and all things Olin come to the forefront. But I do want to make sure that folks are aware that the town is certainly moving forward and proactively responding during the comment period.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Omaha.
I recognize Representative Robertson's telephone number as being someone waiting for public comment, given that he has been identified and basically called out by Selectman Kyra. I don't know if you want to give him the opportunity to speak now or have him wait till public comment.
You know, I, if we wait till public comment, you know, we're just going to be back in the same thing. So why don't we just get it all done with now? So being as though I cannot, I'm assuming it's the 978 number?
It ends in 7874.
Mr. O'Neil, do you mind unmuting Mr. Robertson? Hello, Representative Robertson.
Mr. Chair, thank you for taking me, and I'm sorry that you do have to take this call. I'm a bit perplexed, being called out now twice for what was just a simple hour conversation with the EPA over technical clarification on just the proposed plan, no different than what the town has through GeoInsight. And I apologize if folks felt they were out of it, but the majority of the conversation wasn't advocating for any sort of option zero, one, two, or three. Rather, from what I understand, and I apologize for just coming in now, I was on another conference call, there was a misunderstanding of what this call was about, and one of your board members wanted to understand what type of questions were asked. I'll give you one of the examples that I asked. Within the cleanup plan, I think it's somewhere in the page 30 range, they mentioned something I'd call a multi-phase pump. When I hopped on Google to see multi-phase pumps for DAPL and L-NAPL, there's about 15 different types identified. Questions were such as, what type of pump would the EPA be looking towards? Can you explain to us why a multi-phase pump is more important, et cetera, et cetera? So again, I apologize, I'm not really sure why this is frankly an issue. It was simply kind of like a research call of sorts, clarifying certain things, technicalities, and making understand that we read the plans indeed correctly. So we, as a state delegation, could complement the efforts, along with you on the town, present the united front and bury this problem once and all for the citizens with what we all agreed was the best. So again, while you had the resources of GeoInsight, something that we are not privy to nor invited to, we were simply doing our due diligence. So I'm sure some of the board members will have some things. I'm sorry, I'm frankly frustrated. Doing a simple research for my job is not something that I feel like the state delegation should make note of every time. I feel like I should be educated so when I sit at the table with you, and not to speak for them, but also I know Senator Tar and Representative Gordon had the same mentality. We came up with a short list of questions, making sure we understood certain concepts and technical analysis correctly, so that we wouldn't be playing catch-up because frankly, we don't have the time, not with this deadline bearing down on us. So if any of your members have specific questions, please, I'm here at your service.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson.
We good to go?
I believe so, yes.
So the next item under Correspondence is a memo from me with regard to the receipt of an environmental notice form for a proposed construction and demolition materials transfer station to be located at 887 Woburn Street. This is being proposed by Anthony Martinetti, who owns the property. This is the first step in a siting effort. The, the document is a 454-page application, which includes the environmental notice form that appeared, as I understand it, in the Environmental Monitor, which is a state document that appeared today. And there's a 20-day comment period, as I understand it, with regard to whether a environmental impact report should be filed on this project. We'll be having conversations with council and have had conversations with Shelley Newhouse about comments that would be made on that issue. And then going forward, essentially, there's a series of steps, both DEP and Department of Public Health have a requirement to weigh in on this project. DEP ultimately has to issue a, or go through a process of evaluating whether this site conforms to their requirements and whether it adheres to certain public safety and public health requirements. And if that is the case, then they'll issue a notice of site assignment, and then it goes to the Board of Health, who has a certain period of time, essentially 30 days, they have to hold a public hearing. And then within 45 days of receiving this site suitability report, they have to issue a decision on whether they would agree to the site assignment. So there's a fairly lengthy process that will unfold here, and the town will be obtaining consulting services to assist us along the way.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Omaha.
I wanted to thank the town manager for sharing the lengthy document for the application process and for printing it for me. I have to admit, I haven't gotten through all 450 pages, and I'm definitely not a scientist, is what I'm learning from all of the Olin documents and these documents that we're getting. But I do think it would make sense. I understand there's a process that doesn't involve us, but it does seem to be a potential project that would impact the town if it is to go forward. So I think it might make sense to invite Mr. Martinetti to a future meeting, just to, after we digest the documents and after he kind of goes through the process he needs to go through, I think I would have some questions I would want to ask. And I think I, probably the rest of you would as well, if you're looking at the documents.
And to that point, I would suggest that the Board of Selectmen does have a role to play, certainly with respect, if you choose to, with respect to offering comment when the Board of Health has their public hearing. So that is certainly something we can do.
Thank you.
Next is a memo from me with regard to training to be provided by KP Law. This was a topic of discussion at the prior meeting, and based upon conversations with town council, there was a memo that outlines the training sessions to be held, the first being how to conduct a flawless public hearing. The plan at this point would be to schedule that in October, and we'll be coming up with a date in consultation with Mark Rich and his folks and getting that out to members of the Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, Board of Appeals, Conservation, and basically all the, any of the licensing and approval boards. Then Private and Public Ways discussion about that, municipal duties and responsibilities. The plan at this point would be to target early December for a presentation there. Again, just to be clear, all these presentations will be done via Zoom at this point, but the participants would include Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, Board of Appeals, Conflict of Interest. Actually, the next one after, I've got it out of order here, but the next one after Private and Public Ways would be the effects of technology on the public records, an open meeting law that would be slated for a date to be determined in February, followed by Conflict of Interest, and then that would be available to both boards and committees as well as personnel. And then the final one, which we would look to do likely in June, would be procurement and contracting, and that would be done with staff. These again are, are to be provided by KP at no additional cost to the town. Next is a memo from Mike Woods. There's a question that was posed about the prospect of locating a warning light in front of the fire bays on Church Street. And so I spoke with Mike Woods to provide a cost estimate on, on that. He talked with one of the engineering firms that we work with, and the costs come back roughly $300,000 to $350,000 would be the total cost. Essentially, this is a, for all intents and purposes, a traffic signal on a smaller scale. Obviously, it doesn't have the same complexity of traffic circle, traffic light at Middlesex and Wildwood and so on. But essentially, there's many common elements. There's a requirement to have design services, review of shop drawings, and contract administration. So collectively, the estimated cost at this point, and it is just an estimate, is $300,000 Next is correspondence from Brian Perry, the Finance Director, Town Accountant, with regard to our most recent S and P review. And I will actually ask Brian, I think he's still on the call, on the Zoom session here, if he would like to just provide an overview.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate you giving me the opportunity to briefly touch on the bond rating that, as you know, was facilitated or necessitated, necessitated, excuse me, by the article coming up and a couple items here on board to consider with regards to the advanced refunding bond of the high school debt. To try and make a long story short, we did approach the subject with the board about a month ago in our meeting in the middle of August, as far as the bonds go. In short, we had it accelerated track to. As far as the bonds go, in, in short, we had it, uh, accelerated track to meet with S and P to have our bond rating essentially reaffirmed as a double A plus. It's the, the rating the towns had for a couple of years and it's still viewed as a very stable, uh, rating in the eyes of S and P. They've looked at our finances, they've noted very strong performance for the last decade as far as operating performance goes. They know we have strong management, strong policies and, um, basically pretty well, we're pretty flexible as regard to the budget and able to deal with issues as they come up that are unforeseen. The two demerits essentially that the, uh, S and PC's remains are obligations with respect to pension and with respect to our OPAB obligations. Um, since the last bond rating a couple of years ago, the town has continued to take steps to, um, reduce and improve our obligations. It's still obviously a work in progress and we have taken the steps and we were hopeful that we would have been able to at least, uh, change the mind of S and P, but, uh, unfortunately they reaffirmed a double A plus for us, uh, to try and make a long story short.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. And I did want to just note for folks that double A plus is the second highest rating that, that Standard and Poor's offers, so, uh, we remain steady and it's still a very strong position. If any members have any questions for Mr. Perry, I certainly just indicate. Uh, no one, okay, Mr. Perry, if you don't mind, uh, staying on the line just in case there's any questions regarding, uh, the Board to Consider item regarding refunding the bond for the Wilmington High School project. I apologize, uh, we'll do our best to make sure you, you're, uh, not up too late.
No, I'll be here. I'll, I want to stick around and answer any questions you guys have.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, so next is a, a letter from, uh, Michael McCoy regarding the interest in continuing to serve on committees. Uh, uh, Mr. Chair, how do you want me to proceed here? Do you want me to read the correspondence or?
Uh, yeah, you may as well, Mr. Hall.
Uh, so this is, uh, directed to, uh, the Chair. I want to thank you for allowing my letter to be read during the Selectmen's appointments. It was brought to my attention from an individual that on Thursday, September 10, 2020, at the Board of Selectmen's meeting of August 17, 2020, that a discussion took place under memorandum, Board of Selectmen designate on board committee and commissions. From what I understand, back in July, Selectwoman Omahony, uh, was looking for an update on Board of Selectmen Committees. Fast forward to August 17, 2020, where the discussion took place relative to these committees. Mr. Kyra stated, quote, "Now that Mr. McCoy is no longer a member of the Board of Selectmen, uh, his name should be removed from all of these committees," end quote. Uh, "When I made the announcement not to seek reelection back in February 2020, I stated publicly that I would like to continue to serve on the MBTA Advisory Committee, which meets usually twice a year in the fall and the spring. The next meeting was scheduled for September 9, 2020, and it was rescheduled to September 7, 2020. Second board I serve on is the Wilmington Hockey Rink Committee because quite simply I want to help the youth of Wilmington. Finally, I was appointed to the Bylaw Committee as well. I also expressed my desire to continue to serve on these committee, on these three committees at my final meeting on the Board of Selectmen. There was no objection from any of the board members sitting with me. Over the years, there have been many sitting selectmen who did not seek reelection, who have served and continue to serve on various committees that were appointed by the Board of Selectmen. I've given 33 years of my adult life to the town and 30 years of those, 30 of those years as an elected member of the Board of Selectmen. Uh, put aside that I am the longest-serving member of the board, uh, in the town's history, uh, I would, it would have been nice if this board sent a letter asking if I was still interested in serving on these three committees. My reply would-
Second board that I serve on is the Wilmington Hockey Rink Committee because quite simply I want to help the-
Uh, I would hope to think that this board extends at least professional courtesy to keep me on these committees as they have extended to past board members.
All right, so we're on to, uh, Board to Consider. Uh, the first item we had, uh, dealt with earlier, uh, in the meeting was the, uh, establishing Shriners Auditorium for the election on November 3, 2020, and that passed with a 3 to 2 vote. Next is the Board to Consider authorize the advanced refunding of the bond for the Wilmington High School project. Uh, Mr. Hall has informed me that the particular wording of the, uh, motion Bond Council has advised needs to be very specific. Uh, so, uh, Mr. Hall, why don't you, uh, take the floor with your recommended, uh, motion?
Uh, yes, and I apologize, this is going to be a rather lengthy read, but it, uh, does need to be read into the record and then the document that I have in front of me, Beverly Dalton, uh, the Board of Selectmen's clerk, will ultimately have to sign off that this in fact was, uh, voted. Uh, so what I would suggest is that the board entertain the following, uh, vote, uh, then in order to reduce interest costs, the treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A, uh, of the general laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority to refund all or a portion of the town's $44,190,000 general obligation school bonds dated June 28, 2012, maturing on March 15 in the years 2023 through 2028, inclusive 2030, 2032, and 2037. Uh, collectively, the refunded bonds and that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal redemption premium, if any, in interest on the refunded bonds and cost of issuance of the refunding bonds. Further voted, uh, that the sale of the $28,235,000 general obligation refunding bonds unlimited tax, interest subject to federal and Massachusetts taxation of the town dated September 23, 2020, uh, the bonds to BNY Mellon Capital Markets LLC at the price of $28,60,249.66 and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. Uh, the bond shall be payable on March 15th of the years, uh, and in the principal amounts and the bare interest, uh, at the respective rates as follows. A year 2021 amount 95,000 rate 1%. Year 22, 2022, 450,000 at an interest rate of 1%. 2023, 2,170,000 rate of 1%. 2024, 2,105,000 at a rate of 1%. 2025, 2,400,000 at a rate of .55%. 2026, 1,995,000 at a rate of .6%. 2027, 1,955,000 at a rate of .9%. 2028, 1,920,000 at a rate of 1.2%. 2029, uh, 1,875,000 at a rate of 1.3%. 2030, 1,835,000 at a rate of 1.4%. 2031, 1,800,000 at a rate of 1.55%. 2032, uh, at 1,765,000 at a rate of 1.7%. 2033, 1,735,000 at a rate of 1.75%. 2034, 1,695,000 at a rate of 1.8%. 2035, uh, 1,655,000 at a rate of 1.85%. 2036, 1,615,000 at a rate of 1.95%. 2037, 1,575,000 at a rate of 2.00%. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of the notice of sale and a preliminary official statement dated September 3, 2020, and a final official statement dated September 10, 2020, the official statements, each in such form as may be approved by the treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, and approved and adopted. Uh, further voted that the bonds shall be subject to redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. Further voted, uh, to authorize the execution and delivery of a refunding escrow agreement to be dated September 23, 2020 between the town and U.S. Bank National Association of Refunding Escrow Agent on such terms and conditions as may be approved by the treasurer, Town Treasurer. Further voted that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C 2-12 in such form as may be approved by the Bond Council to the town, which undertaking, uh, shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the town treasurer to establish post-insurance, uh, federal tax compliance, post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the town treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient or if such procedures are currently in place to review and, uh, update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of the bonds and to comply with the relevant securities law. Further voted that any certi- certificates of or documents relating to the bonds, uh, collectively the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one in the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document and electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purpose of the documents in all matters related thereto, having the same legal effects as the original signatures. And further voted, uh, that such members of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be, uh, determined, uh, by them or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
All right, so does any members have any questions? All right, so, uh, do I have a motion on, uh, the authorization of advanced refunding of the bond for Wilmington High School project in the form as recommended by Mr. Hall?
No move.
Motion made by Mr. Bendel. Mr. De Palma, do I take that as a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Mr. De Palma, discussion. Seeing none, we'll call for, oh, Mr. Bendel.
Yes.
Mr. Kyra.
Yes.
Mr. De Palma.
Yes.
Ms. Omahony.
Yes.
I will make it unanimous and, Mr. Perry, I apologize for making you stay on for, uh, an extra 10 minutes as Mr. Hall read two pages of an extraordinarily long motion.
No worries, thank you. Uh, that's all, that, that's perfect for me. I did just want to add a couple of things that, um, the manager, I don't believe he had the chance to touch on, is the timing of the transaction is still pretty sensitive. We do need to make sure it gets signed off, uh, by the end of this week so we can get it notarized by the town clerk and then returned back to Bond Council in order to finalize the transaction. And the other thing that I did want to certainly highlight is when we met last month, the potential savings of the town was roughly, uh, 2.6 to 2.8 million we had, had hoped for. Uh, the way the bond market's gone and the municipal bonds ha- has actually been a very attractive market given the economic circumstances and we're anticipating savings of upwards of around 3.9 million, uh, which is about 229,000 in debt service for, uh, each year through the end of this bond which goes to 2037, so.
It was excellent news to hear, Mr. Perry, so, uh, certainly saving around 3.9 million dollars sounds fantastic to me, so.
I agree.
Good work, thank you for bringing this forward, thank you for, uh, for your diligence on this and thank you to Mr. Hall for reading War and Peace, uh, in the middle of our meeting.
So, i- in just, uh, again, if you would make arrangements with Beverly as to when you can stop in to, uh, or, uh, stop in to sign the documents or, uh, drive to our famous drive-up window, um, ideally either tomorrow or Wednesday so we can get this turned around and back to the, uh, Bond Council.
Thank you.
Okay, the next Board to Consider item, uh, and Ms. Dalton did remind me, uh, late today that, uh, as is tradition, we do waive the fee for these licenses for nonprofits. Uh, the Board to Consider is the approval of license to sell Christmas trees for the Wilmington United Methodist Church, care of John Arvanitis, and the Boy Scouts of America Troop 56, care of John Manini. We'll take them up individually. We have a motion on, uh, approving the license to sell Christmas trees and waiving the fee for the Wilmington United Methodist Church.
No moves.
Motion by Ms. Omahony, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bendel, discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Bendel.
Yes.
Mr. Kyra.
Yes.
Mr. De Palma.
Yes.
Ms. Omahony.
Yes.
And I, it's unanimous, uh, in favor as well. Second for the Boy Scouts of America Troop Number 56, care of John Manini, to, uh, approval of the license to sell Christmas trees and waiving the associated fee. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Motion by Mr. Kyra, second.
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Omahony, discussion. Seeing none, Mr. Bendel.
Yes.
Mr. Kyra.
Yes.
Mr. De Palma.
Yes.
Ms. Omahony.
Yes.
And I, M E S as well, it's unanimous. Uh, and, uh, next, the Board to Consider, and I do see that, uh, Mr. Maella is on the line with us, so, Mr. O'Neil, if you don't mind unmuting him, uh, his request of Wilmington Travel Basketball to temporarily modify the Yentile Farm Recreational Facility use policy uh, for use of, uh, the basketball courts, uh, for the week of September 28th through Friday, October 2nd, and the week of Monday, October 5th through Friday, October 9th, uh, each day from 5:30 PM to 9:00 PM. Uh, good evening, Mr. Maella, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you. Thanks for having me.
Of course. Uh, so why don't you let us know a little bit about what you're asking for?
Yeah, so, um, obviously with what's going on with COVID, we know we're not going to be able to use the, the Wilmington gyms, um, anytime soon and we would just like to be able to run a skills-based tryout outside, so we can, that'll help us in, in forming teams for what we hope to be a season later on in the winter. Um, we averaged, last year we had about 280 kids try out for all five grades, boys and girls, so we averaged about almost 30 kids a grade at each session. And if we use the high school courts, just the one court, it would be extremely difficult, obviously, to run it since we're maxed at 20 kids per court. So if we were able to use a Yentile facility with the two courts, we would be able to accommodate up to 40 players and we would be able to, you know, keep them socially distanced and keep them safe and be able to, um, run a skills-based tryout using both courts. So that's what we're looking for, we're just trying to, um, you know, form our teams to prepare for what hopefully will be a season. Um, just give you guys a heads up, um, both leagues that we work with, the Boys and the Girls Leagues, uh, are actually meeting this week and talking about renting out private facilities in Massachusetts if, if the state allows basketball to be played because most towns already know that the schools will not be able to be used this winter. So basically, that's just what we're looking for, just for the two weeks only that, um, the Chair mentions.
Thank you, Mr. Maella. So just some guidelines on the existing use policy for the Yentile Farm Recreational Facility. Uh, all areas are considered common areas with the exception of the multi-use turf athletic field and the concession stand. Common areas are not to be permitted, they first come, first served policy for use. Uh, the event lawn is intended for passive recreational, so essentially the existing policy, which obviously was pre-COVID, uh, was that, uh, with the exception of the, uh, multi-use turf athletic field and the concession stand, uh, people could not reserve, uh, the other portions of, uh, the facility. So the basketball courts would be included in that as well as the playground, obviously. Uh, but, uh, Mr. Maella is asking for a temporary, um, temporary modification of that use policy so that Wilmington Travel Basketball can have their, uh, skills tryouts, uh, over a two-week period. Uh, I, I certainly think that, uh, policy is good to stick with, but at the same time should be, uh, flexible with changing- flexible with changing circumstances, so I certainly welcome the input of other members taking care to speak on this.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bendel?
For the purposes of starting a discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we grant this request.
Okay, do you have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. De Palma, discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to President Mayella. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you, Greg.
I just wanted to say that I'm in favor of this board to consider item. I hope my colleagues will join me in endorsing this. Obviously, there's very good policy in place for Yentile Park, but given the pandemic, I'm hoping that we can make an exception on a very limited basis here so that we can help out the kids, keep them safe, and help out one of our youth programs here during this state of emergency.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to note that my husband's on the Wilmington Travel Basketball Board, so I will be abstaining from this vote, but if Josie Omahoney doesn't make a team, they're all dead to me.
All right, Ms. Dalton, I hope you have that for the minutes.
My motion does not accept that amendment.
Further discussion?
Yeah, just a quick question. Joe, is it, I'm in favor of this, but is it possible to move the time up from 5:30 to 9 o'clock to 4:30 to 8 o'clock? And the only reason why I say that is because we all drive by that field and the basketball courts, and we see how active it is with the residents in town, and ending at 9 o'clock would leave one hour for people to come and play, but ending at 8 o'clock would leave two hours for residents to take on the court, the young kids that are there. You know, I drive by that place, it's jammed almost every night, and we're going to be taking, you know, Monday through Friday, and I'm sure Friday's important to people, it's the end of the week, and they want to work off and play in basketball. So I was just wondering if it could be moved up, that way you're giving a couple of more hours to the people to use it.
Yeah, it could definitely be moved up. We would probably start at 5:00, and we can end at 4:30, maybe a little too early, but we can start at 5:00 and go for three hours, absolutely.
Oh, that'd be great.
Yeah.
That leaves a couple of hours for the in-town people to play there.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. That's fine.
Great, awesome.
All right, so I'll take that as a motion to amend the motion on the floor. Do you accept that amendment, Mr. Bendel?
I do.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Mr. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Ms. Omahoney is abstaining, and I am a yes, so. Mr. Mayella, thank you for bringing this to our attention, and best of luck, and thank you for your flexibility, and I'm not sure if you were on earlier, but we did speak to Ms. Newhouse a little bit about this proposal, and she had complimented your organization's social distancing and mask wearing.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, keep up the great work.
Thank you, I appreciate it, everyone.
Take care.
Have a good night. Thank you. All right, bye-bye.
The next board to consider item, there is a Scrivener's error. It is...
What happened?
You muted, John. Jonathan, you're muted.
Well, that was fun. All right, so I'll start over. The next board to consider item is a request from Gigi Shalugian to light the town common pink, not purple, there was a Scrivener's error during the month of October for breast cancer awareness. Ms. Shalugian had written a letter last week to us describing not only that she is, was she 20 years of being cancer-free, but she was diagnosed with new breast cancer this year during the pandemic, and she did receive surgery and treatment, and she beat it again. So our congratulations certainly to Ms. Shalugian, and I will entertain a motion to light the town common pink during the month of October for breast cancer awareness.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. De Palma, seconded by Ms. Omahoney, discussion. Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Mr. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Ms. Omahoney?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, so we'll be lighting up the common pink for the month of October for breast cancer awareness. The final board to consider item of the night was a request by Ms. Omahoney to designate a representative by the Massachusetts State Transportation Authority or the MBTA Advisory Board.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Selectman Omahoney as our representative from the Board of Selectmen to this position.
All right, so I will handle this by open nomination, which other members are certainly willing to nominate people as well, and after I close nominations, then we will just have one vote for whoever has been nominated. If it's multiple people, then you'll be voting for whoever you choose. So we do have a nomination of Ms. Omahoney. Do you accept?
I do. I just want to note, I am a state employee. My agency does not interact with the MBTA whatsoever, so I don't believe there's any conflict, but I do need to get permission from my supervision, which I will seek if you decide to nominate, if I'm nominated to the role.
Okay, is there any further nominations? Seeing none, I will close nominations, we will now vote on whether Ms. Omahoney will serve as the board's designee to the MBTA Advisory Board. Mr. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Ms. Omahoney?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, so it is unanimous. Thank you to Mr. McCoy for your use of service on the MBTA Advisory Board. Public comments, Mr. O'Neil, I see that we have a couple people on the line.
We do, Mr. Chair, we do have someone with their virtual hand raised right now, which is to speak.
If you may unmute them. All right, so 978-771-7103, could you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, good evening, this is Kevin McDonald, 140 Andover Street, Wilmington, Mass.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
I have, good evening, thank you for taking my call. I'll try to keep my comments concise and brief. They have to do with a few subjects, and I just wanted to state my thoughts on them. Regarding the bond for the high school, I did not hear anybody mention the fact that our prior town accountant, when at a public meeting was asked about early payment for the bond, he stated that there was a penalty for early payment, and I would like to know what that amount would be. The other subject that I'd like to talk about is the Olin property. On Wilmington Apple, they posted on August 10th of 2020, the EPA's proposed cleanup plan for the Olin site, and one of the points under highlights of the cleanup proposal, I have a concern and a problem with, and that has to do with the containment area. It basically states that they are to construct and maintain caps and cover systems on areas of soil contamination that pose an unacceptable risk, including an impermeable cap over the feature on the Olin property known as the containment area. And the problem that I have with that is they're just covering the contamination, and as you know, the contamination has been leaching into the soil and has migrated into the wellfields, and we've had five wells shut down. In our previous meetings, I had stated that because the wells are not being pumped, that the water is rising and flowing to downstream communities, and I believe that there's an unacceptable risk to the downstream communities by having contamination continually leaching and flowing into the water supply. So I would like the board to take a close look at this and maybe collectively write a letter to the EPA that we have concerns about the fact that the unacceptable risk feature of the cleanup, where it's going to be kept in place, is unacceptable to the town. And I would like to point out that Wilmington has a high rate of cancer, and as a matter of fact, there was a study done, the Wilmington Childhood Cancer Study, and have yet to see that be released, and I would also like to request the board to put an effort into trying to push for that release. The other subject that I'd like to mention is that the Shriners, the vote that you took on changing the polling site to the Shriners, there's been nothing discussed that I know of as to what the town would have to pay to have the polling there, and the fact that it could be confusing to voters, and, you know, I would like maybe some of these things to be touched upon, but, you know, my biggest problem is the Olin site and the fact that it's not being entirely cleaned up. But maybe you could speak also to us about your desire to have this done right, and also maybe for the voters, for the taxpayers in town, come back to them with actual penalty costs that, I believe the bond is with Guggenheim Securities, but maybe Mr. Hall can confirm that. Originally, it was going to be with State Street Bank, but apparently there might have been some conflict of interest there, but that's about all I have to say tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Just to address some of the issues that you brought up, the EPA proposed plan is currently in a comment period. We did hear earlier tonight that at the request of the Wilmington Environmental Restoration Committee, that 30-day comment period has been extended an additional 30 days into October. So certainly, this board is, and the town, is working with our environmental consultant, GeoInsight, to prepare a response, a comprehensive response to the proposed plan that the EPA has brought forward, but understand that that is not something that only the town can do. Residents can make comments as well, and there is a call, and we will be putting information about that call that is happening next Tuesday for members of the public and members of the town to make a comment on what the proposed plan is. That is not a Q and A session, that is just an ability in a public forum for members of the public to make comments directly to the EPA with respect to their proposed plan. You referenced the childhood cancer study. Mr. Hall had reached out to the State Department of Public Health on that issue last month. The response that was received, and Mr. Hall, please correct me if I'm inaccurate in my reframing of it, was that they are incorporating the comments that were received during peer review, and they are preparing at some point in the, hopefully, near future to release that study, and they are going to be scheduling a meeting with, I think the term that was used by DPH was the key stakeholders, which would be the families of those affected by childhood cancer, and certain town officials as well, to update them close to the public release of the childhood cancer study. With respect to moving the voting location to the Shriners, Mr. Kyra had brought up a number of points as to the cost of it. The Shriners is not charging us anything. There may be some incidental costs in the, certainly at the time of town workers to set up and break down the cost of having the election there, as well as certainly the police and fire department detail that would be there as well, and we are looking into the cost of having, I think, golf carts to be used as essentially people movers throughout the parking lot throughout Election Day on November 5th, and Ms. Tuma Conway will be on a meeting in October to review what that Election Day is going to look like, so that people know. Additionally, we're going to be having reverse 911 calls, postcards mailed out to people's homes, town signage, so that people are aware, and of course, early voting and mail-in voting will be avenues that people can choose to take as well for this election. Mr. O'Neil, do you have any other callers? Thank you for bringing up the instructions for public comment. The number is 646-558-8656. The meeting ID that you'll need to enter is 849-2313-8691. You'll have to press pound, and then pound again, and then raise a virtual hand by pressing star nine. Mr. McDonald, I understand you're still on, so. Go ahead. Mr. McDonald, you are on.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to clarify something about the Olin site. The way I view that cap and cover is really liking it to putting a Band-Aid on a broken leg, and if we don't get that site cleaned up, it's just going to be continual problems in the future. Another thing I wanted to point out is that if that site has been the primary cause for the childhood cancer, and we're letting them go full steam ahead with selling that property as a Brown's Field development rather than a completely cleaned-up site that the town really gets no money from as far as damages for what was caused to the children of this town and possibly the adults that got cancer from it, and so, you know, Mr. Eaton, I respectfully would like to request you to dedicate a meeting for the Board of Selectmen exclusively for a public hearing for people to come out and express their ideas, their concerns, and even people that may have lost loved ones to cancer, to get some feedback from the town as to what direction the people of Wilmington want our leadership, namely the Board of Selectmen, to go in, in terms of bringing any type of action so that we can bring these folks who are multi-billionaire, multi-billion dollar company, worldwide company, to justice. And that's about all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Again, the Board of Selectmen does not have the ability to decide what the EPA's ultimate plan will be, but certainly we are working very close, not only with our environmental consultant, GeoInsight, but also special town council to explore all avenues that the town may have, and certainly with respect to having an open meeting by the Board of Selectmen specifically dedicated to how the town feels on it, certainly, my understanding of how the town feels about it is that every avenue towards remediating that site and protecting our legal interests and pursuing any legal remedies is a priority for me, and I am confident that every member of the board, both current and prior to, feel like-minded on. So certainly, you will just merely have to review the agenda from our meeting on August 12th, I believe, to see that we met an executive session just one week after the proposed plan was initially released with special counsel. Now, I can't certainly speak to the details of any discussions with counsel or discussions that take place in executive session. Certainly, you can draw whatever conclusion you would like from merely the fact that we met with our attorney on this matter just one week after the proposed plan was released. So certainly, we are doing everything in our power to advocate on behalf of the residents of Wilmington, certainly those that have been affected by it, and to try and remediate those wells so that they are cleaned up to the greatest extent possible. So, O'Neil, do you have any other callers?
Mr. Chair, we currently do not have any callers who indicate they wish to speak.
All right, I think I do see two callers that are on, so I'll give them a minute in case they wish to raise their hand again by pressing star. raise their hand again by pressing star nine. Mr. O'Neil, has anybody raised their hand yet?
No, Mr. Chair.
All right. It has been a minute, so I will end public comments, and we will move on to announcements. I will actually start off on this because we have a number of birthdays that have come and gone. Mr. Kyra, happy belated birthday to you. You turned a certain age on August 22nd. Ms. Oh Mahoney, you turned a different age on August 30th. Mr. Bendel, I'm sure you changed, turned even a different age on September 8th. And Mr. Hall, you have an upcoming birthday on September 24th. As has become a recent tradition, the Chair of the Board of Selectmen usually provides cookies or cupcakes or ice cream on the meeting closest to the town manager's birthday. So I suppose I owe Mr. De Palma a thank you for traveling out of state and then having to go into self-quarantine so you're meeting remotely to get me out of any obligation to spend any money on any food. But a belated happy birthday to Mr. Kyra, Ms. Oh Mahoney, Mr. Bendel, and an upcoming happy birthday to Mr. Hall, as well as a happy anniversary to Mr. Hall and his wife Tina, who of course is celebrating their anniversary tonight. And I'm sure you would rather no other place to be than to read a motion that took at least 15 minutes to get across to us. So, Mr. Hall, congratulations. Please extend our congratulations to Tina as well. When we spoke earlier today, I told you I was hoping that I would be able to get you out in time to spend some time with your wife, but she's probably gone to bed right now.
I suspect.
My apologies. And just lastly, I just wanted to thank Ms. Dalton and Ms. Cagiano in Town Manager's office. About two weeks ago, Ms. Cagiano received a phone call from an older resident whom Cagiano was able to screen out, had, was currently in the process of being a victim of a scam by being told by someone that her grandson was in some sort of legal trouble. And through the good training, the, I think the, just proactive thinking from Ms. Cagiano and working with Ms. Dalton, they were able to identify that this woman was being victimized, and they were able to loop in the police department, which of course helped out and prevented this Wilmington resident from being scammed. So our thank you for the diligence and alertness of Ms. Cagiano, Ms. Dalton, and of course, the involvement of the Wilmington Police Department in protecting one of our older residents. So, other announcements, Mr. Bendel.
Well, the first announcement is I got to figure out when Jonathan's birthday is. And I'll make sure to let everybody know when I do. But on a serious note, I want to congratulate Pat Chiru, who has just recently been named the new Chairman of the Fort July Committee. And so my congratulations to him and wish him well in the committee. But I also want to take the moment to thank Scott Corant for his many, many years of service to the, to the town of Wilmington and specifically to the Fort July Committee. I've given a lot of time and effort, and so we really appreciate and wish him well. And then secondly, as I do every year, I want to wish all of Wilmington students well as they begin a new school year, although it will look a lot different. I wish them a well and successful and safe school year to all the students and teachers.
Mr. Kyra.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the birthday wish, and happy birthday to my two colleagues, Joe Marie and Greg. I too want to echo the comments of Selectman Bendel in regards to Scott Corant and the outstanding work he did throughout the years. And best of luck to Pat Chiru. I'm sure he'll do a great job. Also, to the students and the teachers and the administration, stay safe and healthy and have a great year. And as you mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, we lost a state trooper in Wilmington. Dear soul, a dear person, in Tom Devlin, 35 years on the force. It was a tribute like I've never seen before, the outpouring of love and support. And, you know, my condolences to the family, and I'm sure that everyone in Wilmington feels that way. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Mr. De Palma.
Just want to wish the schools the best of luck this year. Stay safe. Remember what you were taught. And just good luck to them. Thank you.
Ms. Oh Mahoney?
Sure, I have a few things. First, I just wanted to echo what Mr. Kyra said on last Friday. We were at a very moving ceremony in the morning for the 9/11 anniversary. And then we went to Trooper Devlin's funeral, and it was just a really emotional day, I think. One of the quotes that kind of resonates through the 9/11 is that you learn to mourn people that you didn't even know, I mean, as a country, as a community. And I think that was felt that day, even though I didn't know Trooper Devlin personally. The ceremony was beautiful for him, and you could definitely see how much he was loved and what a man of faith he was. And then in 9/11 ceremony in the morning, you could kind of feel that it's still, you know, 19 years later, we're still feeling it. For the schools, I just wanted to say, you know, I'm getting all of the emails now as well. And again, I just want to remind everyone, let's choose the positive and let's be examples to get through this and be resilient. And for the last thing, I'm actually going to cede the floor for a minute. I have, my sidekick came downstairs. So I have two questions for you, Josie. Number one, when did we fill the ice bucket today for the ice bucket challenge? How many minutes before we dumped it over our head did we fill it? It's actually going to be three questions. Was it less than 30 minutes? Was it less than a Disney show?
It was, it was like, it wasn't that long.
Right, not that long. How did I fill the buckets? What water did I use?
Hose water.
The hose water, not tepid water, right? It was cold, right? And did I get, how big was the bag of ice I took out of the freezer to put in the bucket?
It was just one bag.
A big bag, though, right? And I put it in both of our buckets? Mr. Burns, I rest my case. Thank you.
Leading the witness.
You also control her allowance, so.
I don't have an allowance.
I don't get one, they don't get one.
Family meeting agenda.
Is there a motion for an allowance?
Yeah, tonight.
Needs to be posted, Mr. O'Neil.
That's all I have, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mrs.
Thank you for the birthday wishes.
New business.
All right, you're good.
Anyone have new business? No new business. Mr. Hall, important dates.
Important dates, the next date of consequence is September 22nd, Environmental Protection Agency formal public hearing regarding the record or decision for the Olin Superfund Site. This will be a virtual meeting at 7:00 PM. September 25th, Wilmington Incorporated, 290 years ago. The next, next meeting of the Board of Selectmen is the 28th of September. The plan would be to have that in person while I'm on this. I would just note that I've been contacted by John O'Neil, who in turn has been contacted by WCTV, strongly requesting, as I understand it, that the meetings be held at the high school media room as opposed to the auditorium. So basically, at this point, in light of the requirements per the governor's orders, the meetings in internal spaces is, for every thousand square feet of space, it's eight individuals. So it would not be possible to have the meeting in Room Nine because there's 750 square feet of space there in between the members of the Board of Selectmen, myself, Beverly, and the representatives from WCTV. We would be exceeding the limit there. So best case scenario, we would hold the meeting in the auditorium. Again, the recommendation from WCTV apparently is that they would like to see the meeting over at the media room. The basis of that, as I understand it, is that it takes them considerable period of time to set up in the auditorium and much less so, I guess, at the location over at the high school. I would just note that the auditorium square footage is a little over 2,500 square feet, which would mean that per the regulations, the meeting could accommodate up to 20 people. The, the media room, the square footage is 1,408 square feet. So that would mean that that meeting could accommodate up to 13 people. Obviously, there's five Selectmen, myself, Beverly, and the two WCTV folks. So just as an FYI.
Are you looking for some direction on where to hold the next meeting, Mr. Hall?
I guess at the end of the day, yes. The plan had been the auditorium, subject to any other direction from the board.
I don't, I don't particularly have much of a preference, although if it's of a significant difference for WCTV. I live in between, so it doesn't really make too much of a difference for me, I guess. So certainly let other members comment as they so please.
Yeah, let's see. Whatever is easier for the folks setting up the meeting, I'm happy to be there.
But my feeling, it's fine if you want to go to the high school, but I think we need to talk about that with the superintendent, you know, the building superintendent, because with us going into that facility, now you're talking about having outside people coming in. And with the COVID-19, that they're going to have to clean, deep clean that area with the students coming in the next day. Is there going to be enough time in the turnaround? I mean, I understand the issue with WCTV, but I think we should stay with the auditorium. You know, it allows for more people as well. And I don't know how we can just make that decision to go into the schools without at least having a discussion with the superintendent. Would be my feeling.
Certainly, I think if the consensus was to have a meeting at the high school, that that would, we would have to direct Mr. Hall to have a conversation with Dr. Brand about working that out with Mr. Hooper as well, so.
To that point, I did check in with the superintendent prior to the meeting, and he indicated that he would expect that, that there be, if that room is going to be used, that we would, we, the town side, I guess, engage overtime to make sure that the space is disinfected after each meeting and that there would not be, the public would not be permitted into the space. So those are the conditions that he indicated he would be comfortable with.
Yeah, so for me, it would seem that I would stick with the auditorium. I don't want to prohibit the public from coming in if we can let them in. And if we're going to now have to pay overtime to the janitorial staff, I don't know what the cost of that would be. So again, that's just my opinion.
Mr. De Palma, Ms. Oh Mahoney, do you care to weigh in?
Whatever the board decides, really.
I'm, I'm, I'm open to either. I mean, I think whatever's easiest for the people planning the meeting. If it's easier for WCTV to have us at the high school and it doesn't create a huge impact on the high school having to do extra cleaning, we'll do it there. If it's easier to do it at the auditorium, we'll do it there. I mean, I don't, I'll go wherever you tell me to go.
Well, I could, if the board is so inclined, just follow up with George Hooper in terms of the particulars. Clearly, the superintendent is expecting that this room and at least that room, if not the hallway in, but be disinfected after each meeting. We do have staff on in the evenings, or typically we would at the high school. So the amount of overtime, I would want to consult with George and find out exactly how much overtime, if any, we would actually have to incur in order to make this happen. And then perhaps if the board's so inclined, I can just work this through the Chair.
And can I just add, Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure I heard this correctly, that the superintendent said that he would not allow outside participation from the public. And that's a concern. If we're going to start in-person meeting, how can we prevent the public from coming in and making a comment? You know, do we then set up a conference call for them to call up? And, you know, I, having it at the auditorium allows for 20, when you can have people waiting out in the corridor for them to come in. But having it at the high school, you're not permitting anybody from the public coming in other than naturally us in the WCTV. So you're going to have to work out a way to take public comments if you have it at the high school.
Yeah, Mr. Kyra, I tend to agree with you. I do think the public comment is a, is a crucial part of these meetings. Particularly over the last eight or six months or so, where if a resident calls up and wants to chat, it's not like it was, it's as easy as it historically has been to say, let's go to Panera and grab a cup of coffee. I think we need to be creative about how accessible we are. So I'm not exactly comfortable with the restriction of not having people come into the meetings. Certainly mindful that certainly, we're used to more public comments than we've gotten over the past six months. And I think that at least part of that is because of the format that we're using. I don't, I mean, I'm on several of these Zoom calls a day just for work. I don't, I, I appreciate that it exists and it provides a healthy alternative to within the social distancing world that we now live in. But I, I'm more inclined to say, why don't we meet at the town hall auditorium? Because if people are not comfortable using some sort of form, at least we have the option of having them come in and speak to us directly, and also setting up some sort of conference call line that they can participate remotely if they're more comfortable doing that, too. So I know, Mr. Hall, you and I have had several conversations over the past few months about making sure that whatever the format is, as it evolves, as the, the environment that we're in evolves, that we are making sure that we are as accessible as possible and that we're leveraging technology to make sure that we are accessible to the people that care to to reach out and comment on matters that affect them in the town. So my inclination at this point is to stay at the town hall auditorium with all apologies to WCTV, but making sure that we also retain a, I suppose, a remote option for people to call in for public comment. Okay. And lastly, a salute to service. Thank you to Mr. Smagley for providing this. Private First Class John F. Landry was born on Christmas Day, deployed on Halloween, and was killed on action on St. Patrick's Day, 2007, at 20 years old. Throughout his high school career, John was a leader, a member of the student council, the campus ministry, and served as a student ambassador and was an avid athlete, playing both basketball and football. Forced to be reckoned with, John is a lineman on his football team. He stood five foot 10 inches tall and weighed 240 pounds, played both offensively and defensively with fierce determination and strength. As a student, his intelligence was phenomenal. He set goals for himself, and he worked hard to be a straight A student, and his favorite subject was US history. John went on to graduate with cum laude honors from Old Catholic High School in 2005. He received a scholarship to go to college. But first, he was determined to serve his country after the events of September 11th, 2001. He came from a military family. His father, John Senior, was a Marine, and his grandfather was a member of the 82nd Airborne Division. His high school principal, Mary Ellen DiMarco, recalls that John talked about joining the military throughout most of his high school career. She quoted him as saying that he was going to serve his country and make her proud. Shortly after graduating, John began training at Fort Benning in Georgia and was based at Fort Bliss in Texas. He'd been serving on the front lines with the 2nd Battalion, 12th Cavalry. He'd been serving on the front lines with the Second Battalion, Twelfth Cavalry Regiment of the First Cavalry Division since October thirty-one, two thousand and six. He was killed in action on March seventeen, two thousand and seventeen in Baghdad, Iraq, defending his fellow soldiers, a troubled country and a grateful nation. He had a tattoo on his left bicep that read, "My lifestyle determines my death style." And he lived as a hero and he died as a hero. So our thank you, our eternal thanks to Mr. Landry for, uh, his service to this nation, uh, in paying the ultimate sacrifice. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Motion by Mr. Bendel, do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kyra. Mr. Bendel?
Yes.
Mr. Kyra?
Yes.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Ms. Omahoney?
Yes.
And I M A S. Good night, everyone.
Good night.